Good evening and welcome to the March 13, 2013, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. My name is Kevin Staunton. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Scher.
Here.
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 Here, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Everyone has received a copy of the meeting agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Meeting agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Edina Planning Commission of February 27. Before we vote on this, Jackie, we received a copy in the mail, which is the final copy. Is that correct? There was a preliminary draft in our packet. Okay. With that understanding, are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes and approve the consent agenda?
So.
In a second?
Sorry.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Next up is community comment. This is the period of the meeting where we invite members of the public to comment on any issue that is not before the commission this evening. You have up to three minutes to comment. And if there's anyone here, I'd welcome you at this time to come up and make your comments. Seeing none, I'll close the community comment and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public hearings. And the first item is preliminary rezoning to PUD, Preliminary Development Plan, and Preliminary Platte Anderson KM Builders, 7171 France Avenue. This is a continuation from a public hearing that we held two weeks ago. Carrie, you're going to introduce this topic.
I am, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, members of the commission, bear with me here while I call up the PowerPoint. Okay, thank you. This was an item was tabled at the last Planning Commission meeting. What I thought I'd do is just give a brief summary of where we're at, summarize the project again, and then the applicants will also address some of the concerns that were raised. So the request that's before you again is for a construction of a new Byerly store out at the intersection of France and Hazelton, 47,000 square foot store. Also, their applicant is proposing three housing buildings, each would be six stories tall. Building B and C have retail at the first level, and housing building number letter A, that would be all housing. For the phasing of the project as proposed, the existing Byerly store, which is located roughly in this location here, would remain open while the new store would be constructed. Also, while the new store is constructed, housing A would be built. And then, once the Byerly's, the new Byerly store opens, then the existing store would be removed and then the building B and C would be constructed. So the request that's before the Planning Commission is a preliminary rezoning from the current zoning of PCD III to planned unit development, and preliminary development plan, and a preliminary platte. This is a two-step process, as you recall. Should the city council approve this first preliminary rezoning, they would then come back with a final development plan and final rezoning. Staff was recommending approval of the project subject to the findings and conditions that were outlined in the previous staff report. That wasn't included in the packet this week, but we did hand it out, so each of you have those. If the Planning Commission is inclined to improve that, that would be kind of the basis for the findings, and then anything that you might add in terms of findings or conditions could be added to that. The Planning Commission, again, tabled this request at the last meeting for several concerns, or three primary concerns. First, pedestrian connections. Second, sustainability within the building itself, and the engaging of the promenade. So those were the three primary concerns that the Planning Commission raised. Others included the north elevation along, of the Byerly store, along the north and west elevations. There was also some concern about the proximity of housing C to Hazelton Road, concerns over the loading dock area right here for the Byerly store, concern over direct connections from the apartments to Byerly's or to the retail area. As a result, or at the end of the meeting, staff along with the Chair put together a summary of what we felt were issues raised by the Planning Commission, and then sent those to the applicant. So that was what they worked from in coming before you this evening. So just to put that out there, that there was an email that was circulated by myself and the Chair.
And I'd just add that we circulated copies to the rest of the commission as well.
That's right. So I will just quickly go through some of those, and then I can turn it over to the applicant for a little bit more detail. So the plan that's on the screen here, this was the site plan that was reviewed by the Planning Commission at the last meeting, and this is the new plan as proposed. So some of the more significant changes include widening and expanding the east-west connection from the promenade to France Avenue. You see on the previous plan, in particular, the connection to the promenade was small in width, and the new, this whole connection does become wider. So there's this connection here, they've also added a bike connection within this housing, within this building, there's a bike room down there. So this would lead right out of the bike room and directly onto the promenade, and we'll see some graphics of what that might look like in a minute. So that has been added. They've also stamped into the pavement these pedestrian crossings across the pavement. They have, in this location right, whoops, this location right here in the previous plan, you see, they have closed this off in the new plan here to eliminate some of those conflicts between cars and pedestrians. An additional feature that they've added is a canopy over this connection right here into Byerly's. This was just a sidewalk in the previous plan. They have added some landscaping up here to address some of the screening concerns with the loading docks. They have also added some windows along these elevations here to break up some of that mass. There was some concern the last go-around in that regard. So here is one elevation of what that might look like. Let's see. Going back, they have also added some benches along the way here for pedestrians off the And just to quickly show some elevation, so again, here are those windows. This is a look from the promenade to housing A. This is that bike storage room here, and this would be that new connection to the promenade with a little bridge over the water feature, which you'll note on the plan, they've also enhanced that, that water feature that was shown on the promenade plan as well. You see, the previous plan didn't have much detail in that plan. Another look on the promenade here, there's again that bike path. This would be that expanded connection here, looking at, this is building C, building A. Another look straight in from the promenade. So with that, I can stop here and either turn it over to the applicant or answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Any questions at this point for Carrie? Yeah, let's just turn it over to the applicant. Mr. Voss?
I should carry his most of the slides out so he can use them.
He's always stealing people's thunder.
And I should say thank you to Carrie. When we met with you a year ago and we did the sketch plan review, we spent a tremendous amount of time with Carrie and with Wayne Hill and your staff going through the comments that came out of that sketch plan review process. And in the last two weeks, I would say the same, they've both made themselves tremendously available to us, and we're really grateful for their availability and their counsel as we have gotten to work on this plan and on the revisions that we thought were consistent with the requests that you made both a year ago and in the last couple of weeks. And I should say separately, and I meant to mention this to the Commissioner earlier, I went to Duluth East, and I'm really happy that Edina won the state hockey tournament. If we had to lose to somebody, I'd like to lose to the winner, so congratulations, Edina, for the hockey win. The memo that we received from Mr. Teague and from the Chair indicated three primary areas of concern last week, and then some ancillary issues. Two of those primary areas dealt with pedestrian movement through the site and our connection to the promenade. So I'd like to deal with those together. And the third issue category was really around sustainability. We were asked to identify some specific metrics that we might pursue, some specific targets. Our architectural team at Pope put together a letter that summarized some of the issues. I understand there was an error in one place. Commissioner Potts was able to help us correct a couple of things, and was kind enough to follow up with some specific questions. And if you'd like me to address those individually, we can. If you want us to just talk globally, we can. I'd follow your guidance on that.
I think I'll ask questions once we hear what you have to say. Go ahead with your plan.
All right. Well, on the issues of sustainability, one of the primary areas that we have been conscious of is the fact that the density of this site does something that probably few other sites in Edina do. We have 250 residents who now live across a parking lot from a grocery store. In the work that we've done to identify our customers, most of our customers drive two to three miles to a store, so let's assume they drive two and a half miles each way or a five-mile round trip. We have 250 residents who make two trips to the grocery store a week, and those miles are eliminated. We've taken 125,000 driving miles per year off the streets of Edina. That doesn't include any of the other retail, that's just the grocery next to the residential. So the mixed-use density by itself creates a sustainable site. LEED gives you credit for that. I hope you would also appreciate the fact that we've done something significant in Edina that we haven't seen anywhere else. We think that's material. We also intend to use low-flow cost. We intend to use sustainable design features. We intend to follow the EDA requirements through Xcel Energy, which will allow us, require us to exceed the 2004 ASHRAE standards by 5 percent. Not all the details have been designed until we knew we had a project. We haven't gone into the granular level of stormwater design. As Commissioner Potts can tell you, the watershed district mandates that we do a stormwater design plan. Currently, the water runs off the parking lot without control or quality measures. The new standards will require that we store the water on-site, so we manage volume and rate, and the quality, of course, goes up exponentially because we do nothing to maintain water, stormwater quality, leaving the site today. Tomorrow, we'll have stormwater measures in place. So I think most of the major metrics, we can imagine, will be substantially improved. The specific measures, some we have, some we don't. As we get farther into design, I'm happy to work with, you know, whoever is available to make sure that we measure up to the standards that you have in mind. Where we struggled, frankly, was looking at the city standards. The city doesn't have specified metrics or specified minimums. There isn't an ASHRAE standard, there isn't a LEED requirement. So we intend to be as cooperative as we can, but we're cooperating with sort of an amorphous target. So again, it's, our intentions are good. Lund's built the store downtown to LEED standards, and I suspect that they would follow some fairly similar standards. The process for LEED certification has been entirely unsatisfying and tremendously expensive, and we're not likely to get certification again. But the refrigerant systems that we use are 40 percent more efficient than the old systems. We use all LED lighting in the store and in the parking lot. We use lighting sensors, so in the back room, the lights aren't on if there aren't people in there. Those kinds of sustainability measures are just core to who Lund's is as an organization and the way they design stores. There aren't metrics in the city code that we can use to apply to those good standards. So we have good intentions, we don't have good rules. So again, we have the intent to cooperate and to be sustainable, and to live up to the expectation of the PUD, which asks us to do sustainable measures. We need to work together, I think, to better define what the standards might be. But we intend to be there with you in both good design for the site, as well as for the store and for the housing. So, and I'll take specific questions as we go on, if you'd like. Beyond that, I thought it might be easiest if we walked through the site plan, kind of west to east, start at France Avenue. And so these images, I'll try to be specific about some of the details, and that might begin to answer some of the questions. This image that we're looking at, then, is the north-south sidewalk that will go in along France Avenue. It does not exist today, but with the work that the city's doing on France, there will be a north-south sidewalk. And the flagpole there indicates where we will have the deli area of the new grocery store, and an outdoor seating area with, you know, free access to the public along that sidewalk. Those of you that walk up and down France Avenue, in your mind with me for a minute, almost no sidewalks, and absolutely no place for the public to sit, let alone sit and enjoy food. The only seating area with a restaurant is a tavern on France. You have to go inside through the restaurant and behind the fence to get to their seating area. This will be the only public seating area for dining or for any other activity along France Avenue and along your new sidewalk. So we're the first to participate in what you're creating as this new pedestrian corridor up and down France. We think that's significant. We also think that the opportunity to come inside the restaurant or the deli, grab some things, go up to the mezzanine, and maybe sit outside and enjoy a sunset view over France Avenue is a pretty unique offering, and it's part of the pedestrian experience that is connected to the store, but we're open 6:00 AM to midnight. So most of the time people are walking, we're open. You're accessible. What you'll see, then, is that we invite pedestrians to come under the canopy next to the parcel pickup. I acknowledge that's sort of a narrow walkway, but that's, we'd love to have them come through the store and buy product. We're trying to make that more comfortable for them. And from there, if they want to move toward the east, it might be a little bit hard to see, but just past the parcel pickup, the sidewalk in front of the store will be a covered sidewalk and a heated sidewalk, so there won't be snow or ice there. And then the sidewalk that runs down through the parking lot will also be covered, and so pedestrians, oh, let's see, that was not the slide I wanted. Here's the site plan. The, I'm going to do this. Now you can see the sidewalk that runs across the front of the store. Again, that's going to be a heated sidewalk. We'll have a bike rack near the entrance, and then the walkway that runs down the middle of the parking lot will also be a covered walkway. We don't intend to heat that, but it will be covered. And either along that walkway or along the rain garden, just to the east of that, we'll have some charging stations for electric vehicles. So again, sustainability, I mean, we have installed those at a couple of their stores and find those to be very popular. When the pedestrian then gets to this four-way intersection, one of the things that's changed between this site plan and the one you saw two weeks ago is a north-south sidewalk that used to run up the east side of this driveline. What we realized is that if the bus stop ends up in this area, which we understand MTC is now proposing, pedestrians that walked to the east across this, then down and back across here, had to cross traffic twice. One of those was a trucking lane. So we thought it was safer for pedestrians if we could encourage them to come around the west side of the store to the new 10-foot walk and into that entrance. And so we've eliminated this north-south walk between Hazelton and this intersection, again, to promote pedestrian safety around the west side of the store. Folks that want to get to the residential area can either come through that or proceed along Hazelton and then come down the sidewalk on the other building, other side of building C. Then we've got this area. We intend here to have a stamped concrete treatment to look like pavers. Those of you who've put in pavers know the maintenance headaches that those create, so we'll create the impression of pavers there. And that will signify to drivers, this is a pedestrian crossing area, this is a place to slow down, to do something different. And we intend to use, you know, markings in the concrete, possibly even elevate the concrete to slow down traffic. And that hopefully provides a couple of different ways for pedestrians to cross that primary intersection safely. As Carrie noted, then, in front of building B, the parking used to be accessed on the south edge and then directly coming out the north end. We've closed off that north end and widened the walk through that area to eliminate one of the pedestrian traffic crossings, so traffic is exiting that parking area down here. We end up losing four parking places doing that. I will tell you that we're anxious about the amount of parking that's provided for the retail, but for pedestrian safety, we felt like that was an appropriate compromise to make, and your invitation to think harder about this pedestrian pathway was helpful to us as we looked at that. Again, we're moving then to the east. Now, hopefully, the primary pedestrian route is along this edge. We'll have another bike rack here to service building B and the retail that's there, and another bike rack here to service building C and the retail that's there. So we're inviting folks to come off the promenade with their bikes and visit any of the retail facilities that are here, thinking the public is primarily coming to the site, if they're coming in for retail activity. We've also then altered this courtyard a bit, and we're now proposing a piece of public art here. We'd been thinking about where to incorporate public art on the site, but to the extent that we want this to be a kind of an extension of the promenade and what is today the primary pedestrian access to our site, which is the promenade, that ought to be our primary pedestrian point, we're trying to create this place that people accept the concept of a destination on the site, so inviting folks from the promenade to a place where there might be some benches or a fountain or a sculpture of some kind. We don't know what that is, we need to work with your folks on that. But again, to invite people through the site to that public art space, and then ultimately through maybe a grove of trees and a winding sidewalk that takes us down to the promenade. I suggested a couple of weeks ago when we were here that we think about how to invite people from the promenade in. So what we've suggested around the water feature are some seating areas that start to bring people up a little bit, and then maybe some benches and even an entry sign that says, "Welcome to our neighborhood." Might have the Byerly's logo, might have some of the other retailers that says to folks, "This is where you come to visit whatever retail operators are here." So we're trying to create ways to invite the public in and to the site. And I think, again, is what's interesting here, there's no other site along the promenade from the Galleria to Centennial Lakes that invites folks through a neighborhood like this. All the other residential developments don't have this access point. Coventry, the condos come right up to the formal garden, but there's no access from the Coventry complex into the promenade. The building behind this has one pedestrian path, but it's not a pedestrian path that's public or that goes through to York, it just goes into their first parking lot. So we're the only site anywhere along France or anywhere along the promenade that invites you to make this connection, other than at one of the major streets, Hazelton Park Lawn, some of those. So we're trying to do something here that we appreciate is unique and different, and again, one of the purposes for the PUD is to do these new and unique things. I think we're trying to accomplish that. So let me give you a couple of other rendering images of what we think some of these access points and things might look like. Sorry. This may be looking from the promenade toward the grocery store. You'll see the store in the background here. This column is meant to signify whatever that public art piece might be. Again, we're imagining some seating area there, some low plantings, so that people find a place to sit. If they pick up some food at the deli and they want to come back to the promenade but stop, this is one of the places they can do it. It also then creates a kind of a community center and a courtyard for the residential community, which will be strongly centered around that piece of art and that piece. So we think that's helpful. If we come down to the view, this would maybe be from the promenade where I mentioned that signage. Again, if you're on the promenade now, you can find a marker that says, "Come to Byerly's," "Come to the restaurant," "Come to the, you know, the dry cleaners that's here," whatever might be there. And so we'll give folks a sense that this is not just a private walk for the residences, as you might find at a couple of other buildings. This is a public access point to the retailers that are here, including Byerly's. The water feature that we showed previously was just a dotted line. As we've mentioned before, we do not intend to use that for stormwater runoff. It's possible we could, and we worked with your engineer to think about different alternatives. We did not want to over-design the water feature, recognizing that it's not ours. So right now, we can imagine a water feature that's fairly lengthy, that runs the length of our building and maybe down onto the Macy's site. We've created in the drawings a basin that's about 60 feet wide for this water feature. If it's a babbling brook, it might only be 15 feet wide, but we've given plenty of capacity in our plan to accommodate whatever water feature is the preference of the city in this area. We do think that the access from the bike storage, which is on our first level of parking under the building, coming out onto the promenade, actually provides a nice amenity for our residents. Probably would be a secured door, so we wouldn't have the public trying to sneak in the garage. We've got security issues there. But we actually think that that connector is nice, and the chance to do some sort of pedestrian bridge over the water feature there might also be kind of a nice element in the improvements to the promenade. As you all know, the promenade has been rebuilt in sections, and art has been added in various places. This is the one dead spot on the promenade where it hasn't been repaved, where the bike and the pedestrian paths haven't been improved, where the art hasn't been installed. So if this bridge can contribute, if the water feature can contribute, we're happy to participate with you. That's part of what we brought to you a year ago, was a housing plan that you asked us to bring to the promenade and enliven that area, and I think we've done that. One of the other questions that came up a couple of weeks ago was the, kind of the sense of what do these residences along this edge facing the promenade look like? I think, if I'm not mistaken, that was the better image. I apologize. You can see from these, that those would be private patios elevated slightly, so they're not quite right on the ground level. And again, they're across this water feature from the promenade, so the sense of privacy is there. But again, the building opening up onto the promenade is great, and I think there's four units there. So if we're worried about who wants to live on the promenade, we just need to find four families, just four. So I think it'll be all right. But actually, I think for some people, the chance to have an almost ground-level terrace is pretty intriguing. And because of the green nature of that promenade and the unique feature that that is within the city of Edina, there might be a fair amount of demand for those units. So we're excited about what that can bring. But I know there was some question about the scale of those. One of the things that happens when we bring in this bike access is that this wall below the pool probably gets a couple of feet taller than we had told you last time. We told you it would be about seven feet. To bring the terrain down low enough to get the door out, that height probably becomes nine to 10 feet. It's a small adjustment. We proposed adding some additional landscaping around that to soften the height of that wall, so that, again, it starts to match into whatever's happening with that water feature and creates this gradual transition from the sidewalk through the water to the building. I could talk for hours about details. Maybe I shouldn't invite you to start asking some questions. We are excited about the progress we've made, and again, I really want to thank Carrie and Wayne for being resources to us over the last year, but again, over the last couple of weeks, they've been very available, and we're grateful for their interpretation of the concerns that you raised, and I'd be happy to answer other questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Voss. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Grable?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions here. You mentioned LEED certification and that you're not going to apply for LEED certification because of the expense and the monkey business that goes along with actually getting the certification.
Yes.
But you do intend to follow those standards, and I think that's becoming a more and more common practice, that people want to build and they accept the standards, but they don't try for the certification because of the cost and the expense associated with that. But who, if you do that, and generically, if a building, a developer does that, who actually signs off that the standards have been met? I mean, I would think that the LEED, whoever they are, would be the ones.
There is a adjudicating body, the U.S. Green Building Council, and you submit your plans to them both pre-construction and post-construction, and they determine what's been done and what you're proposing, and then what you actually built. And the issue that we're having, for instance, with the story downtown for Lund's, we're having a tremendous difficulty getting the final as-built plans approved. We promised we'd do these things, we've done them, and now they're asking other questions. And so it's cost us an enormous amount of money, chasing our tail essentially, to satisfy this adjudicating body. Mr. Potts, maybe you, I know you're fairly fluent in LEED, you maybe can explain the process to folks better than I have?
No, no, it's probably not the time to get into the weeds with that, but I have worked with LEED enough to take issue with the statement that it's tremendously more expensive. So I think it depends on how you approach it.
I would argue that construction is not tremendously more expensive. The certification process adds a significant amount of cost that doesn't enhance the performance of the building or the pedestrian experience or the customer experience. So I maybe should fine-tune my remark.
Okay. We should talk off of this topic, perhaps, about that, because I still would take issue with that. I think it depends on how you do it. I think relative to Chairman Grable's, Commissioner Grable's, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
He casts a large shadow.
Yeah, I'm going to get moved further away next time, I think. With your question, I think, yeah, that's very fair, and I think probably the most challenging thing to assess is the energy efficiency that the project has agreed to go through energy design assistance with. And I think to back out and talk about what standards we're looking at, as you're coming in requesting a planned unit development, as we sort of look to you to tell us how much better than standard code you'll be, or where, you know, what you'll bring to us, I think that's what we were looking for. know, what you'll bring to us, I think that's what we were looking for last time. So we've gotten a lot more of that, certainly. You stated tonight you're seeking to be 5% better than state code. That's a, you know, that's a good way to kind of put a stake in the ground and say, here, you know, here's clearly what we're going for. And then as far as how you follow up on that, I've given this some thought, certainly, I think one way to do that in the, I think in the spirit of continuing to work with the city would be to make the city or make Kerry Teague CC on distribution of energy design assistance minutes, then he would, it's all in the hands of someone else, they'll just keep him appraised of what's going on, and he can forward things to us as need be. One thing I wanted to ask, if Commissioner Grable doesn't mind if I continue on...
You're doing quite well.
Okay. Previously, you mentioned just the housing being part of EDA. Are both the housing and the grocery store part of it, or is it just the housing?
Yes, I'm sorry, I just need to make sure, yeah. We do, again, with the store, we have standards in place that we've been employing previously, so EDA is not going to be a challenge for us there. The efficiency that the Lunds team has figured out how to drive through their stores is really impressive, and so again, because refrigeration is sort of an expensive system to run, finding out the best way to do that matters tremendously to the operating cost of the store. And so when they position themselves as a store that promotes organic foods and, you know, conscious lifestyles, they need to have a store that runs the same way. So motion sensors in the back room, for instance, makes a difference, motion sensors in the guest restrooms, all of those little things, as you well know, add up, and those will be in place.
Right, and you've also noted LED lighting throughout the store, and that's more concrete information than we had before, so I appreciate that. Let me circle back to both parking and stormwater. I guess stormwater first, you described the code that you follow in the watershed district. Are you doing anything above and beyond that, or is it...
Right now, we haven't done the details of the stormwater design, again, until we knew we had a project, we haven't gone super deep. The plan that was in your packets assumes that we do all underground storage, so of course, that handles rate and volume, and then quality, as I mentioned, just goes straight up compared to where we've been, but there aren't standards, and because Centennial Lakes is downstream from us, we're exceeding any standards because that's designed to take the rate and the volume, so we're sort of exceeding any standards that you could put out there, just with the plan that we have in place. What's imagined here, some of the dark areas or some areas where we might do rain gardens or infiltration, the soils here allow for tremendous infiltration, and so we're starting to study in the 1-inch, 24-hour rain event, or the 2-inch, or the 100-year rain events, how much of that 35,000 square or cubic feet of water we can actually percolate without running it into our storage tanks and then out into the system. So there's some design work that's being done, and I think, you know, we'll be able to demonstrate some pretty significant improvements over just what you've seen today, but for the preliminary submission, we drew sort of the simplest plan that meets the requirements of the watershed district.
Okay, and then finally, and then I'll yield the floor here, back to the parking. As I mentioned last time, I thought the parking for the retail spaces, which is roughly four and a half spaces per thousand, is below our city code of five, but Commissioner Platter mentioned that going below five is becoming more of a retail standard. I think that is a good move, I think it's a sustainable move, you are going to have more pedestrians going to the store, hopefully, than driving. Housing is, in my opinion, is still highly overparked.
I wonder if we're looking at the same metrics. We have about 349 bedrooms and 363 parking stalls, so our parking count per bedroom is almost the one-to-one that you suggested in your email. I'm wondering if you're looking at the total unit count, which is the 250 to the 360 parking stalls. That metric might look wide, but the parking stall per bedroom is just a whisker over one-to-one.
I was looking at our city standards as well.
Okay.
If, I think those are in the table from Kerry, and comparing that, I agree, yeah, the market is demanding sort of a one-for-one. I guess my point is, in the interest of sustainability, any parking space is replacing potential green space. To bring that back down some degree lower than it is would be prudent in the interest of sustainability, and I think trip generation, this site will have all the trips of people that go to Byerly's now, plus many, many more.
I hope you're right, and the cash register keeps ringing.
I don't quite buy your math with the amount of miles you're saving. And I do, I guess finally, I appreciate some of the improvements to the pedestrian connections, I think those help, and the connection to the promenade.
Let me make a couple of comments, if you may, on the parking. When we were here last year, a number of the commissioners encouraged us to think hard about whether the five per thousand retail standard was really necessary, and so we've talked internally about some of the strip retail and B&amp;C and what that might functionally require, and then we looked hard at the store and talked to the store manager about how many parking stalls he needs to operate the store, plus employee parking, and we're a little anxious about that, frankly, we think we might be a little bit light, and the store's response was, "Well, if that's the case, we'll add an extra cashier, an extra carryout, and help people turn over the parking lot a little more quickly." So we know that there's some operational things that we can do to keep this parking lot functioning short of just adding stalls. So we've tried to think about how we can do things internally from an operations perspective that don't get a sustainability point, but do reduce the total parking count that we might have otherwise wanted on the site. They wanted 250 stalls initially for the store, and you can see we've got 185 plus potentially 20 in the seat parking lot, so, you know, a little over 200. We're under what the store ops guys wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Before I get back to Commissioner Grable, I just did want to jump in, Mr. Voss, one of the things you mentioned in your presentation was the lack of city standards on some of these sustainability items. And as a background for you, as well as others who are here, one of the troubles that we have as a city is being preempted by the building code, and so we can't really have these kinds of standards, and one of the things we talked about when we adopted a planned unit development is that that ordinance would allow us to negotiate with particular developers to exceed what would ordinarily be the standards. And so, you know, this all needs to be considered in the context of this being a PUD, and a PUD is a legislative action where we're trying to basically negotiate a new zoning code for this site. And so I just want to be clear about the fact that it's not a failure on our part to want to lay standards out there.
Well, I did not mean to suggest that you've been derelict in your duties. My challenge was to define over what measure, by what percent, we would outperform, and so the baseline for that outperformance was for us a little more challenging. We had the sense from the start that you intend that we exceed the state building code standards, that, to me, is a bare minimum.
Right, so fair enough that we're having a little dance about who goes first and who puts the stake in the ground, but it is a give and take, and we need to figure out, you know, I think it's pretty clear from our planned unit development ordinance that that's one of the things we want to accomplish, so...
One of the purposes stated, we agree.
Okay. Commissioner Grable.
I'm curious, at the last, when we were here two weeks ago, there was an issue on the driveway going out to Hazleton, and whether or not the neighbor had agreed to the turnaround or something. I'm just wondering, has any progress or communication occurred on that issue?
In fact, yes. Mr. Wolfson, I believe is here tonight. He and I had a chance to meet last week, and we talked further about some of the criteria that he had in mind. We also looked hard at the design of Building C, and by eliminating that sidewalk that I mentioned earlier, and by narrowing the footprint of that building, we were able to relocate the road entirely onto our parcel and not encroach on his site, and that, he made clear to us, was one of his highest priorities, and we've been able to accomplish that. We'd said previously that once we understood the requirements of the planning commission in our final plan, we'd look to do that, but given this last two weeks, we've had the opportunity to take the time, and we moved it, frankly, a little farther than I thought we could, but it's now off his site, but for the throat of the roundabout. I should also mention that your engineer has invited us to think a little bit with the traffic folks about whether a roundabout or a stoplight works best there. I'll tell you that from the perspective of taking semis and grocery delivery trucks out of the site, a stoplight works much better than a roundabout, but we've drawn in the roundabout because we heard both the county and the city and our neighbors say that was their preference. If we get to talk about that more, I'd like to go back to a stoplight, but we understand the preference of others for the roundabout, and we can accommodate that, so.
And then one final point, if I might, Mr. Chairman. On this project, it's true, is it not, that had the requirement not been in place that you maintain the store in an open condition while the construction goes on, that things might have been entirely different?
We had looked at a couple of different orientations for the housing that are, in fact, impacted by the store. The placement of the store might have been different if the existing store didn't need to stay open, but it's a store that the Lunds and Byerly's folks own today, it's a site they own, they fully intend to continue producing revenue every day. It's tremendously expensive to shut it down for a year, both from a customer disruption and just annual profits. So we didn't really think very long about keeping that store, taking that store down, that was a mandate from the start.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Forrest.
You mentioned narrowing Building C, will that impact the podium effect that you told us about last time?
Only by a couple of feet. What we looked at was the depth of the retail, and then we have going down behind the retail, the parking access ramp. We've narrowed that ramp slightly, we gave ourselves a little bit narrower turnaround, we narrowed the drive lanes out in front by about six inches, just some really minor adjustments that let us slide that building over. And again, probably the most significant piece was taking out that sidewalk, because that was about five feet, and we needed to move the building about 11 feet, so, a big chunk was taking out that sidewalk.
And you talk about, I see the bike rack locations, and of course, the scale, it's greatly minimized on the plans that we're seeing, but I guess, as you see need, I would like to see that, you know, expanded, and it looks like there's room to do so at the locations. Also, maybe consider placing a bike rack over closer to the store patio area in case people are just coming there to stop at the deli, they can keep an eye on their bike.
Yes, we've had that conversation internally that a bike rack there might make some sense. We've also wandered to the east of the entry where there's a bike rack and some green space. If we can do water infiltration and some sort of sustainable water treatment feature there, we might use that green space, if not, there might be additional seating. So we're playing with those two corners of the building, thinking about how we make those appropriate spaces. So I accept your encouragement to look at a bike rack by the patio. We've also wandered at the patio if, and this is a wonder, this isn't a promise, so don't hold me to this, but could we do some sort of outdoor fireplace or some other sort of seating experience that creates an even more interesting pedestrian node along this new France sidewalk? So, it's a crazy idea.
Well, no, it's a great idea, it's just that there's, we've had those issues come before us before regarding actual wood burning fireworks.
All right, so there won't be a fireplace, it was an idea.
Do you want to do a gas feature, maybe? I don't know. And then what materials will be used for the covered walk?
Again, the details of the design there aren't set. As you look at this, it would appear to have two posts holding up each side. We're looking at a design today that had one post down the center, so I think what you'll see is that the columns for that match very much the store design, the stone base and the precastor brick look above the actual canopy itself. We haven't worked out, again, it would be absolutely consistent with the store, it'll look very much like part of the store. And because along the front of the store, we've already started to imagine the details for that canopy, it's too early to say, but I suspect we'd be matching architecturally that, so it would have a series of flat roofs. There's some slope as it goes away from the store, so it probably wouldn't be a straight roof, because the water would come shooting off the end at 90 miles an hour, so it'll probably have a series of steps. Again, those are some details we just haven't had a chance to work out.
And again, I would like to encourage you to look at some creative grading and landscaping for southeast end of Housing A, where that wall's height has been increased. I'm concerned about seeing this big blank wall from the promenade.
We appreciate that, and as I said, the last drawing, we dropped in some landscaping there, and when we thought about the bike door early this week, it was like, "Oh, that'd be a great idea," and so we've had a week and a half, so.
And then the last thing is, it seems like I'm not familiar with LEED, as my colleagues are, but I'm wondering if you've anticipated any ongoing oversight committee education or whatever of your tenants, both retail and residential, in order to maintain best our current practices?
We've had some conversation about possible educational opportunities. You do get a LEED point if you do some things, whether it's in the building or showing somebody a little plaque that explains how the rain-water runoff system works. Again, that's the next level of detail that we haven't done, we're open to that conversation. At Lunds, if you're in any of their other stores, there will be signage that talks about LED lighting or some of those things, so, I mean, at Lunds, that's an educational habit that they've started to establish and are looking to expand.
Just one point to follow up with, we talked, I talked just a minute ago about the planned unit development context that we're working in here. We're not working with our usual zoning, we're talking about making a zoning change that's specifically tailored to this site. I'm curious what you see as the benefit of that for your development? Why is that helping you accomplish what you need to accomplish?
I think the planned unit development helps us in a couple of different ways. The plating and subdivisions is a separate piece, and obviously, just because of the structure and the design of the site, that needs to happen.
Right, that could probably be done even in a normal zoning.
Right, sorry, but I just want to grab that and say that isn't the factor here. The PUD, I think, enables us to probably optimize the real estate that's here and really create a community that might be harder to create if we didn't have some of the setback variances. Bringing the building closer to the promenade does something that, frankly, the planning commission asked us to work really hard on last year, which was to bring the residential community to the promenade and add life to this side of the promenade that isn't present. And I think when you look at the Target building or the Macy's building, there are some stale spots, and this one had been that, so we've got the chance to do something different here. The cost then of doing this encourages us to think about doing some extra density, you're putting retail on the first floor and housing above, that whole mixed-use stuff gets easier when we have this collective conversation. I think making this mixed-use site with kind of the, I don't want to say extreme density, but kind of the fully-loaded density here happens when we do the PUD. We've got to push the edges of this a little bit.
Because certainly there wouldn't, in the normal, kind of, the existing zoning were about half again beyond that intensity with this one.
We are, right, and, you know, the store would, while there's been this encouragement to think about pushing retail out to France and bring the lively retail activity to the street, we've added some glazing to help that happen. The setback that's mandated against France Avenue, once we get back from the sidewalk, we start to lose the chance to do that, so cheating in on some of those setbacks creates this vibrant experience that people are looking for. Having the capacity to bring this pedestrian walkway all the way through pushes us to bring the buildings closer to the edges so that there's this activity in the middle. So I think those are some of the things that the PUD and the variances embedded there enable us to do that we wouldn't otherwise.
If there aren't any other questions, Commissioner Schroder?
I do have, and I really want to probably delve in a little more into that same question, because you've actually said your primary goal of this project, very simply, is to sell groceries and rent apartments, and I really think we need to challenge ourselves to understand how, why we need a PUD in Edina to sell groceries and rent apartments. I appreciate a lot of the things you're saying, that you're moving in a direction that will exceed energy code by 5%, but I think you referenced it's a 2004 version, we're in 2013. It doesn't seem like 5% gets us very far, because this building will be here for 50 years, or 90 years, or 100 years, so that 5% threshold doesn't really push us very far. I also appreciate that you're suggesting that below-grade stormwater management and pipe galleries is a better way of treating stormwater runoff and protecting a downstream water body, but frankly, you have to do that on the site because you have no other place to put a pond. If you were to put a pond in or some other method, you wouldn't be able to put a building in, or you'd reduce parking, that would change your ability to sell groceries or rent apartments on this site. So a lot of the things that we're looking at, I think we need to keep pushing harder because the PUD that's being asked for and the measures that are being proposed are all about getting this onto the site and not really exceeding or satisfying the real creativity that I think we're trying to get to when we created a PUD to begin with.
Any other comments at this time from the planning commission comments or questions for the applicant? Commissioner Carr.
I just want to say, overall, I think the plan is very well done, the architectural detail looks good. I just had a few questions. What is the seating capacity of that patio on the France Avenue side? Just curious.
I'm not sure, I remember off the top of my head, I think we're looking at about 20 to 30 seats outdoors on the ground level and probably 15 upstairs, 16, something like that. It's not meant to be a huge public space, but we have to recognize that people eat outside only about four or five months a year in Minnesota, so.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay, well, that's good. The other thing, too, is I was just at Target, and I noticed they have trees in the parking lot. You don't have any trees except for on the exterior or the ends. Have you considered putting some trees in the parking area? I think that's nice from an environmental standpoint and provide shade, et cetera.
We've looked at that. Again, it's a challenge. If we put in a series of islands, we end up losing parking space, so we've got that push-pull. And one of the things that we're thinking about, particularly in front of Building C, is whether those trees that we have could actually create stormwater runoff settings. In Target, of course, all those trees are surrounded by curbs, and so have to take extra water for irrigation and really don't treat any of the stormwater. And so we're trying to look at whether or not we could use some of the planting areas to do a little bit more for sustainability and still make it easier to plow the parking lot, make it safer for people who aren't bumping into trees or curbs. So that's a tension point that we've looked at.
Well, I'd ask you to consider that. If it's possible to do that, I think it's
Appreciate the suggestion.
It's good from a green standpoint. One other question I had, too, and I'm new, so I didn't have a chance to ask these questions.
I was feeling badly for you as we sat here for three hours last night. We were waiting to confirm.
I know, I was in the audience, yeah. The compatibility of the materials between the Byerlyes store and the residential units? Now, the Byerlyes store is brick with other materials. I can't remember all the materials, but it sounds as though the residential buildings are of different materials?
The grade level of the two buildings will have a combination of brick and precast and stone. And so the relationship of those materials, I'm sorry, the ratios of those materials will be different between the two buildings. Byerlyes will have more brick and much less precast, where the residential will have more precast than the same brick. In the first packet, and I'm sorry, I won't know what page it was on, you were given a sheet of the materials, and if you look closely, the brick on the Byerlyes store has a reddish to a slate gray blend. The dark gray slate on the store is the same as the gray slate on the housing. So the ratio then moves slightly darker. So if you set those side by side, there's gradual continuum of color. The overlap is in the darker brick that matches between the two buildings. So we're trying to have them coordinate without trying to match. This isn't Byerlyes and Byerlyes East. This is Byerlyes and then the residences and the retail that's there. So the coordination was important, and we tried to use color and material consistency without having them match.
Okay, I just want to make sure they were compatible.
Yeah.
It didn't look like a different project for the residential units. One other question, I think there was a diagram for the window treatment on the France Avenue side where you showed the new window treatment. I didn't see one for the north side.
On the north side, because that's all back-of-house, it's all warehouse, there really isn't an appropriate place for us to put windows. We're going to have products stacked back there. So what we suggested was we put additional windows on the east side and on the west side.
Okay, maybe I've got my directions wrong. The Hazleton Road.
Which would be the east.
That's east, okay.
Yes. And what we imagine there is you come in the front door of the store, let me.
That's north.
Hazleton is road is north. I'm sorry. You said the road coming in from Hazleton.
Well, I thought it was north. Am I correct? Yeah, north is Hazleton.
Hazleton Road is the north side.
I didn't see a diagram for the windows, and I'm assuming it's the same as France Avenue, but I didn't see a diagram.
So on this north side up here, again, because that's all back-of-house, we don't right now imagine putting any windows back there. We're looking at some larger over-story trees and some, there's a fair amount of slope coming up that, bringing natural light into the warehouse, when we expect the warehouse to be dark when there aren't people there, didn't strike us as a very productive use of glass. So on the west side, as we indicated, there's more. And then on the east side, as you come in that entry, just to the right will be the produce department, and we're imagining some clear-story windows above that to bring natural light into the produce department. So where the customers are in the store, we're hoping to add much more natural light than they have today or really at any other store but for the one downtown. In the warehouse, natural light into the warehouse didn't strike us as a very prudent thing to do, again, with the energy, the lighting that we'll be using.
Okay, I think visually, it would be more attractive with some windows on that side as well as France Avenue. But, and let's see if I had any other questions. No, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think what I'd like to do at this point, we have, you have made some changes in response to our comments from last week, and so I'd like to give any members of the public who are here and are interested in commenting on those changes an opportunity to be heard. And so if there's anyone in attendance who would like to come up and comment on the changes, this would be a good time. Just come on up to one of the side podiums and state your name and address and tell us what you're thinking.
My name is Bob Rauffeldal.
I think you're, probably, yeah, that one would be easier. The microphone works better on that side.
My name is Bob Rauffeldal. I live at 7125 Bristol Boulevard, which is exactly two blocks west of Byerlyes. Moved in there in 1974, so I've been there about almost 40 years. I've been before the Planning Commission, before talking, and it's the same issue, traffic, traffic, and traffic. They originally wanted to put a five-story office tower where the assisted living is, and the council correctly stopped that. We have traffic issues right now before you're adding 360 parking stalls plus retail. You're adding about 500 people a day to that area. Making a left-hand turn on France and New York is a headache. I always go behind Byerlyes to make my left-hand turn because it is such a problem. And in the wintertime, when it's slippery, it's even worse. And then I go straight many times on Hazleton rather than making the left on France because it's a too-light stop. Now you're going to put these cars in there, and you have no idea what's going to happen. Also, if you start plugging up that street more with France, you're going to have people going down 72nd and Cornelia Pass to school to avoid the light at France. This is a huge, huge traffic issue, and that has to be solved first before you can put that many cars in there. I've seen nothing. We talk about getting approval for this first and then worry about the traffic afterwards. We can't do it that way because it's a problem. Like I said, I've been there for 40 years almost, and I've seen the traffic there. Centennial Lakes was a gravel pit when I moved in. I would go look for agas with my kids, loved it, but I knew that wasn't going to stay. And you did a great job with that. But now the land is used, and so everyone wants to go up. When you go up, you have traffic problems, and that's a huge, huge issue with this. That has to be solved before you can put that kind of traffic on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rauffeldal. Just one comment on your comments, and thank you for those. At the previous meeting, we did have extensive discussion about traffic. So your point has been raised, there has been a city traffic study done, and it is part of what we're considering here. Mr. Wolfson.
Hi, Bill Wolfson, 3655 Hazleton Road, the adjacent property to the east. And I appreciate the efforts, obviously. They've attempted to minimize the impact to our property, and, you know, I'm here to be a supporter of the project, but I also want to, you know, protect our interests for the long term. I know Commissioner Grable asked last time that the adjacent properties need to work with what is put on the site, but when you use a PUD and you have variances of setbacks and things like that, you affect what can go on those sites in the future. And so I'm still here saying I appreciate what they've done, but the Building C placement on a six-story building is quite close to our site and would affect our ability to do something vertical as well. So our theoretical plan, because we're still working through, and we've been patiently waiting for this plan to kind of develop our long-range plan, is to have a short-term recycle of our site, five, 10, 15 years, and then potentially have a nice vertical site that's consistent with the area that probably would have residential. And I think that probability is diminished by, you're not going to stack two six-story buildings next to each other, and there isn't vertical viability, there isn't viability to residential if there isn't a certain amount of vertical. So, you know, the point of the PUD is to increase the economic viability of the site, or it does that, by being able to encroach on the setbacks. And I'd like to touch a little bit on the parking because I know the sustainable move is to have less parking, but if we're trying to drive traffic to the promenade, we have to account for where those people might park. I know that if I go to the promenade at Centennial Lakes, I park near Whole Foods, and we haven't talked about parking impact there, and I don't think we've talked about parking impact for day users or short-term trip users of the apartments as well. If you're going to forget your iPhone and run back in, you might not. Or you're going to have a friend, or you work from home, or you bring a contractor over. I want the site to function really well and park really well. I don't, there's nothing you can do if you underpark a site in the future. It's not good for business. It's going to impact people overflowing onto our site, which will impact my users' viability. So I respect the green concept of lower parking, but, you know, I'm in the commercial real estate business as well, and, you know, if you don't have parking, you don't have sales tax, tax base, and all those things that are supporting this. So I still have a parking concern. And to the neighbor's point about the traffic study, the assumption in the manual was a 1% growth factor, which I think we can all know that Edina probably exponentially exceeds growth factors of 1%. You know, the average increase in lease rates and economics and CPIs are 3%. Some of these economics in these areas are growth of 5% in store sales and things like that, so I don't know how you can have 1% traffic and parking growth rates and have 3% to 5% sales and revenue growth rates. And so, again, I'm just, because we're tied to the site, I'm concerned about those things. Like I said, I'm trying to be supportive, and I am supportive, and I appreciate all the things they've done, and I'm sure you do, too. But I also, you know, the use of the PUD is, and the setbacks is, and the, what I would say, tight parking ratios are all things that'll potentially impact us. So I'm sure that was longer than three minutes, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfson.
Yep.
Anyone else who'd like to comment on this application? All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
Close.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Pose, same sign. All right, the public hearing is closed. Back to the commission, comments from commissioners. Let me, actually, before we go to that, you know, the couple of issues that got raised in the public hearing, traffic, we did talk about pretty extensively at the last time that we visited on this. You know, I understand the intuitive kind of reaction that folks have. Wayne, can you, can you kind of summarize what the results of that study that was done were?
Yep. Chair and commissioners, when you look at a site like this, I would not disagree with Mr. Rauffeldal. Came up and testified that that is an issue today to get out onto Hazleton Road because on this site, you have two entrances. The one sort of secretive one that he uses and I use during the busy times of Byerlyes is the easterly entrance onto Hazleton Road, and then you have the westerly entrance that is in proximity, pretty close to France Avenue, too close. So when you look at that, and when they came to us a year ago or so talking about this, we said, you really, and they realized that, too, that you really need more access and ingress and egress off the site. So what they did was they went to the Macy's folks and asked for a license, a cross-easement to go across their property to access Gallagher Drive, the traffic signal there, and were able to acquire that from Macy's. The other one that we looked at was a right-in, right-out onto France Avenue, which in the past, the county with their access rules have always said, no, no way would we ever give more access onto France Avenue. But then when we started looking at the site in comparison to the Centennial Lakes Plaza, which is very similar to when you put in the Macy's and the Byerlyes, they have a right-in, right-out there. So I made the argument with the county that based off of that and the way that works, it works fairly fine. It's busier now with what's been going in, but is that, why not we look at doing that on, between the Macy's and the Byerlyes site? So we've been working with the county and are very, very close to getting their formal approval for the right-in, right-out. Some of the things that the county has been looking at is the entrance and exits off of Hazleton Road, just to make sure that those work fine and actually don't put too much traffic onto the right-in, right-outs, but it spreads it, basically spreads it out on the site, which leads to the traffic signal and/or roundabout on the easterly side. So they're really promoting to have either a traffic signal or roundabout on the easterly entrance in order to give us the right-in, right-out so that you have a nice pattern circulation going through the site itself. So we, you know, we've been working with the county, we're there with them. The site itself is going from two entrances and exits to five, essentially. They're not all full entrances, with the right-in, right-outs on France, the right-in, right-out on the westerly entrance, which actually will help the operations of the France and Hazleton signal by not having another full intersection at that point. So from a traffic perspective, I think it's improving the area. Through the traffic study, they did realize that there is some existing issues out on the France Avenue, even over to the east on York Avenue. I did meet with the county last week and raised those issues with them and said, we need to start figuring out what we do with those, especially the left turn, northbound left turn to westbound Hazleton is an issue at that left turn bay, and then also southbound, the left turn lane going on to eastbound Hazleton is another issue. And that's a little bit more trickier because you have a, your effect, if you, what you, on that particular one, I'm kind of rambling a little bit on, but on that particular one, it's not just extending the left turn bay to accommodate the queuing lengths on going southbound to eastbound, because then you're getting into the left turn bay, going northbound to westbound 70th Street. So it kind of goes down the line, and so
There's a ripple effect.
Yeah, those issues really need to be dealt with between the city and the county. And like I say, those are pre-existing conditions that we need to deal with.
How about the discussion about Mr. Voss mentioned, and I think Mr. Wolfson as well, the whole roundabout versus stoplight on the Hazleton, the east entrance off of Hazleton?
Yep. One of the, both work, actually, with the stoplight versus the traffic signal. However, the traffic signal, in order to put a traffic signal, it has to meet a set of warrants. And when they run the warrants with what they look at for opening all the residential units and the grocery store, they don't meet all the warrants to put in a traffic signal. We know in the future, five, 10 years, it's going to meet warrants, but to do it right away does not meet warrants to, you know, get it by the state of Minnesota for, that they would sign off on allowing a traffic signal to go in. Similar to what we looked at when we looked at the Target in the west end, is that those would meet future warrants, but they didn't meet them right away. So you get into the issue of who's paying in the future to fund those, that traffic signal, and then go five, 10 years down the line and re-dig up the roadway and put in a traffic signal. So that's why we're leaning towards looking at a roundabout at that location, which it does, a roundabout will work. We ran the turning movements for an over-the-road trucks, moving vans, some of the larger trucks that have deliveries to the retail, to the grocery store, and they do maneuver around a roundabout that we've laid out for that location. So that's why we're kind of looking at more of a roundabout rather than just allowing them to put in a stop signs and then hope that a traffic signal would go in in the future.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a few comments. One, which I'll lead off with, is just a reiteration of a comment I made at the last meeting we had, and it's the reason I'm actually going to vote against this plan. And I may be the only one that does that, but I'm still troubled by the fact that what we have is, in my view, an uninspired development with a scattering of apartment buildings spread out on the property and a lack of integration of the residential with the grocery, something that I still think could have been done. It's obviously not going to be done, and I find that very disappointing. Flipping it on the other side, with respect to some of the parking comments that have been discussed a little bit earlier this evening, I'm a little bit more inclined to be a little more gracious about giving access or more parking availability on the site. I think that Mr. Voss was speaking a little bit about concerns over how close they were on parking already, and I think that we'd be smarter if we were on the side of a little bit more parking, a little bit less sustainability, so that we don't end up with a situation where you've so that we don't end up with a situation where you've got cars basically stacked in the parking lanes, trying to find parking. We're talking about the possibility of people getting in and out of this, of the parking lot on Hazleton or otherwise. And it just seems to me that we'd be smarter to make sure that we at least err enough on the side of sufficient parking, so we don't end up with a problem that might be hard to fix later.
Just speaking to Commissioner Carr's statement, I would like to see at our next, you know, for any final development plan, a detailed plan or indication of where the materials are and have the materials boards available then, too.
Yeah, I certainly think that's, that's an appropriate item. One of the balance points that we have to strike here in the preliminary versus final plan is I think we need to be, I think the final plan really needs to be those kinds of details or conditions that we're talking about here that are pretty clearly outlined, so that the developer can respond to those. And, and then we can compare the response with the standard that we've set at this preliminary stage.
Commissioner Graeble.
A few comments. One, I like the fact that we're facing residential onto the promenade. That's what we've wanted to do, and I appreciate the fact that we're doing that, I think, very well. There's a comment I wrote down, and I have no idea what I wrote down, so we'll pass over that one. I think we do overpark in Edina, and with respect to Commissioner, Commissioner's comment, I think in general, our, our rules overpark. And I think this, this plan meets, makes a good compromise on that. We have added entrances and exits, or access to France Avenue, which we do not have now. I think that's very good. I am concerned a little bit about Commissioner Schroeder's comments about, and also the Chair's comments about how a PUD is a negotiation with the developer. How are we supposed, we don't have a good process to negotiate with the developer. You know, blame it on the prior chairman if you'd like.
Fair enough.
But we don't have, but we don't have a good way to do that. We can't, we cannot, given the, the time, the time limits that are imposed on us by the state, to move on, on development proposals. I mean, how do we do this? Do we have a subcommittee of the, of the, of the planning commission meet with the developer and negotiate these things out? Or we can't come back and say, well, this week, you know, last time we met, we didn't like this, so you address those. Now, this time, we, we meet, we don't like this and so, so come back two weeks from later and address those, and then, then we'll come back with a couple more problems. What's a developer supposed to do? I appreciate the fact that there may be some frustration on some commission members' parts that we don't meet exactly, we're not getting exactly everything we want. But in the first place, in a negotiation, you don't get exactly everything you want. It's a negotiation. And I said last week, the perfect is the enemy of the good. So, I'm, I am concerned if we're going to take the position that a PUD is a negotiation, then we've got to come up with a better way to negotiate it than every two weeks at a planning commission meeting. So, and I do, having said all of that, I do like this proposal, and I will probably make a motion to accept the thing, so we can move on with it at the appropriate time.
Just to address some of my friend Commissioner Graeble's comments, I, it is a fair point that the goalposts shouldn't be moved. But I also think when we have a flat-out disagreement about what is going to be done, that's an issue we've got to wrestle with. And I think the pedestrian circulation is one of those. I mean, in our, in our summary of the comments that we made at the last meeting, we made it, we made it clear, we were looking for, and I'll, I'll quote from the, from the, from the memo, "Commission is looking for, to find ways to make the site more welcoming to pedestrians, signal the motorists that they are sharing the space with pedestrians, and better facilitate pedestrian movement from the promenade and the apartment buildings to the attractive two-story Byerly's destination on France Avenue and back. The commission is open to any designs that can accomplish these goals, reducing the number of times that pedestrians are required to cross drivelanes, converting the sidewalks to widen, to widened and landscaped walkways that make them more inviting, and signal the motorists that they are sharing the space are two possible ways to approach achieving the goal. Ultimately, the council is looking for a site plan, or the commission is looking for a site plan that makes the pedestrian experience a primary feature that the uses are linked to, rather than vice versa. Such a pedestrian-oriented design is specifically identified in the city's PUD ordinance as a way to justify departures from the usual zoning code requirements." And in Mr. Holmes's letter, in response to that, he made it very clear that, you know, in response to one of the comments that we made about the design team, quote, "grabbing the promenade and pulling it onto and through the site," that they disagreed with that, that they think that the goals of the project are very simply to sell groceries and rent apartments, and that while pedestrian connection to the promenade is important and desirable, as they put it, "the promenade is an amenity that has informed the location of the housing," but it is not and should not be the primary organizing force. Our site is adjacent to the promenade, but it is not the promenade. So, I think we at least have to wrestle with this question of, you know, whether that's good enough for us.
If I might.
You might.
I understand that. But in fact, the proposal does make changes with the pedestrian access to the site, through the site. And so, it's, I don't want the impression left that, that they haven't done anything about that, because they have.
Fair enough. And, but I also think it's not fair to say that we're changing our tune this week from last week. I think we made it pretty clear what the, what the pedestrian orientation was that we were looking for. I think we also talked about sustainability. We talked about addressing the promenade. And to their, in fairness to the applicant, they've come forward with a response to that. But I don't think we're, we're moving the goalposts on.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we're moving the goalposts. But I am saying the commission expressed an opinion last week, this is a negotiation, the commission expressed an opinion last, at the last meeting. The applicant has responded to that. And now are we saying, well, that's not good enough? And if it's not good enough, then what's the response? Do they, do we table it for two more weeks while we come back? Or do we somehow or other, at the beginning, appoint a subcommittee to sit down with the developer and say, these are the concerns, how are we going to do that? I mean, is there a negotiation? This is not an efficient negotiating posture here. You can't do it in these meetings this way. And I think it's, and, and you, we may, that may be the right position, but let's not saddle, can we saddle, in fairness, can we saddle this developer with our inability to come up with a good process to negotiate?
Well, I don't want Commissioner Graeble and I to monopolize the conversation, but I would say that I think it is, it is not a lack of a framework to negotiate. I think we have a, we, we have to decide whether what they're proposing is good enough to satisfy what we think is necessary in a planned unit development context. And each of us are going to have different perspectives on whether that's the case or not. But I, you know, I think we're talking about the right things, and it's just a matter of, the commission, I'm not in favor of kicking this down the road for another couple of weeks. I think we need to make a decision in terms of how, what kind of recommendation we're going to make to the council. And I think the issues that we're wrestling with are pretty clear. It's the pedestrian orientation, it's the sustainability, it's the connection with the promenade. And, you know, there's some traffic issues, but I think we've gotten some expert input on those that, you know, for me at least, it's hard, as Commissioner Graeble said last meeting, it's hard for me to quarrel with the experts who we paid lots of money, who tell us that it's going to work okay. Commissioner Shearer, and then I'll come to Commissioner Potts.
Since I don't think we're going to resolve the long-range approach to PUDs, I'm going to move on to just sort of my general comments. I'm probably going to vote in favor this evening. I would like to point out, though, that there, there are issues that I continue to be very concerned about on the property. And I, I don't know whether there will be a hope of addressing those, given the ongoing economic viability of running a business while you, on a, on a site, while you're starting to build other buildings on the site. But I, the north elevation of that building has bothered me since the first discussion we had. I used the phrase, I think, in the last meeting, and it still does, I was just looking at the pictures, it looks like a prison. It's got two guard towers on the end, and it's all brick in between. And, and I also don't like the fact that where we're asked to give a large variance is, is that we're bringing the proximity of that long brick wall right up to the street. You know, we're taking it, I think, I think the difference is 50 feet to 26 feet, or something like that, in terms of the setback variance. That bothers me. I don't exactly know what to do about it. I've asked it in every meeting, but nothing has changed on that elevation. I was also concerned about the higher walls on that one corner of Building A as it approaches the promenade, and they've become higher, although now they have some vegetation. That, that continues also to bother me a little bit. I don't want to get a tunnel effect in the promenade as we simultaneously address our issue of engaging with the promenade. It's a balancing act, as far as I'm concerned. I'm also going to be really interested to watch the covered walkway. I realize that the proponent has added that, I'm sure in direct response to our observations. It could look cheesy to me, a covered walkway in the middle of a parking lot, just my opinion. I'm going to be very interested to see what its purpose is and what the materials are that are on it, and, and what it, whether it really directs people to the store, or provides that avenue, or whether it just looks sort of like an added art function or something in the middle of the parking lot. I was also very interested in the comments about adding vegetation into the parking lot area. I had not thought about that. And I do think that's an attractive element, if it can be done in the limited space. I don't know if it can. I had a thought about Building C. I know we won't be, it's, that's really the longer-term issue, but I was thinking about your neighbor. And again, we're asking for a variance there because of its north-south orientation. I don't know what would happen if you oriented it east-west and nestled it in closer to the other buildings. You might give some relief to your neighbor. The parking would still be on Hazleton, but you wouldn't need the same variance request at that end. Just an aberrant thought for, for the long term. That being said, I, I know how hard the proponent has worked to respond to our ideas and our comments. It's been a strange process, I think, for everybody. We haven't done too many of these. So, I really want to express my appreciation for all of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Potts.
I'm, I'm looking at the compliance table on, on page 11, that Commissioner Shearer was just referring to, that indicates the two setbacks from, from the standards that are part of this. I think from a general standpoint, I'm certainly supportive of, of increasing density on site. Setbacks like that don't give me a lot of heartburn. And I think it's looking at the floor area ratio, which is where the, the request for this PUD really comes from, because it's asking for an increase of nearly 50% over what our current standards are. And I think that, that's a significant request. And getting to the point of requesting a PUD, I would expect more coming out of the gates here to come back to the, to the city in terms of what we're looking for. I, I look at this site, and echoing some of Commissioner Schroeder's comments, it's well-designed to run Byerly's brand business in, in the manner that they run their business, and they do that very well. And it's designed to fill up rental housing in an efficient way and attract good renters. I just, I don't see much coming back to us as the city in terms of something to, to grant a PUD for.
To respond to my fellow commissioners somewhat, I agree regarding the north wall. It is, because you also have the long visual barrier along that driveway, that first driveway as well. So, it is just really one side that is active. I don't know, in a dream world, you'd show part of your bakery through a window or something like that. But that is obviously a concern of more than one of us. As far as, I mean, I guess, I was told that some cities do conference, you know, more of a conference situation for PUDs. It's a balancing act between having the public involvement also in a public hearing each time, I think is, is kind of the flipside positive. So, we may need to revisit our PUD process down the line. But I, I think, you know, as, as you're saying, as far as what we expect, personally, I'm, I'm very pleased with the changes that have come forward. But we would hope that any participant in this process would be in the same boat with us, that our goal overall is to improve the livability and improve the amenities of the city. And so, you may be doing that through retail and housing. However, that is, I think that the common goal of improvements for the city itself should be in our sights.
Commissioner Carr.
Again, being new, I have a few questions, and maybe you can assist me on this. The setbacks, what is the basis for the setbacks? Just what's been proposed? Was there any discussion of setbacks before?
So, and Carrie can correct me if I've got this wrong, but basically, under the existing, in the compliance table on page 11 of the original packet, is a good summary of it. Under the existing zoning, there are certain setbacks, and they're basically driven by the height of the structure. And so, it has to be that far from the, from the street. And then the other, the other major departure going to a PUD in this situation is that it's, they're looking for a 72% floor area ratio as opposed to the 50% that's normally permitted in this particular zone.
Okay. And then one other question, too. If I were to vote in favor of this, as the staff has recommended, what kind of additional conditions could be put on, for example, as far as the windows on the north-facing wall? Is that something that's appropriate at this stage, or has that come at a later stage?
So, a couple of responses to that. One is to remember that we're making this recommendation to the council.
Right.
And so, ultimately, they're going to make the decision, and they take into account what we might recommend. But we are free to put conditions onto our recommendation, just as they are free to put conditions on their approval. And I, my, from my own perspective, I think it is important for us, with, with the exception of the kind of minor details of, you know, colors and, and those kinds of things, I think in all fairness, we should be letting the developer know what it is they have to accomplish to get final plan approval. And I think staff would tell us that we, we shouldn't be expecting to deny final plan if we haven't made it clear what's expected to accomplish final plan.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
I am mindful of the hour, and another public hearing that we have after this. I don't want to get a reputation of running meetings till midnight every time we have meetings. And this would be two in a row. So, I, if there's more discussion, I'm happy to entertain it. But if someone has a motion that they'd like to move along, I'm happy to entertain that as well.
Mr. Chairman, I do, I have one question. With respect to this north wall discussion, what's the difference between this proposal and what we approved for Whole Foods? Seems to me that the walls are essentially the same.
Carrie, can you enlighten us?
The, if memory serves, the council did put some conditions about adding some landscaping. It was more on the east wall. I'm, I don't believe there are windows in the north elevation of Whole Foods. There weren't conditions added there. But there were conditions added on their east elevation.
Yeah, they changed, they changed, I think they changed the, the geometry or something of the truck, truck bays. But I think that but I think that wall is essentially the same.
Right.
And here, they've added landscaping.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion by my.
Did you have one more comment from Commissioner Carr, and then your motion?
I didn't know if it was relevant, what was done at Whole Foods, but personally, I don't like the wall on Whole Foods. I don't think it's very attractive, having just a straight wall, as Nancy describes it, the prison look. I don't think that's very pedestrian-friendly, attractive from the streetscape. So I'm assuming we don't have to necessarily follow what was done for Whole Foods. Thank you.
Commissioner Graeble.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we recommend that the City Council approve preliminary zoning from PCD III Plan Commercial District to PUD Plan Unit Development District and Preliminary Development Plan to build a new 47,000-square-foot Byerly's store, a six-story, 106-unit apartment building with two levels of underground parking, a six-story, 77-unit apartment building with first floor, 10,450-square-foot retail area and two levels of underground parking, and a six-story, 60-unit apartment building with 10,500 square feet of retail space on the first level and two levels of underground parking, subject to the findings on pages 14 and 15 of the staff report, subject to the conditions outlined on pages 15 and 16 of the staff report, and also that we recommend that the City Council approve the preliminary plat to create a new four-lot subdivision at 7171 France Avenue for the proposed project approval, subject to the findings on page 16 of the staff report and subject to the following conditions. Those four conditions as set forth on page 16 of the staff report, which I note includes a payment of $1,230,000 to be paid to the park dedication.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Commissioner Carr.
I would like to add an additional condition to that motion, and that is that there would be window treatments on the north side, Hazelton Road, consistent with the window treatment that is on France Avenue.
Is that, I take that as a proposed amendment to the motion. Is that acceptable to the mover?
I have no idea. I have no idea what that does to the plan for the building. As I understand it, the north side of the building is warehouse space. The France Avenue side is retail space, and I'm not sure that, I'd like to hear from the developer what it thinks of the idea that we put the same kind of windows on the north side that were on the west side.
Would that help you decide whether it's acceptable or not?
It could.
Okay. Mr. Voss.
Chair and Commissioners, thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this tonight. The north side, as Commissioner Graeble has indicated, is warehouse space. And if the intent of glazing of windows is to bring natural daylight into the store area, that won't be accomplished by putting windows on the north side. If the intent is to bring incandescent light out to the street and to show activity inside the building typically at night, when it's dark outside, we won't have people in the warehouse. And because we'll be using energy-sensitive lighting, that'll be motion-sensitive, it'll probably be dark, so we wouldn't create the light going out. And if we light that space just to light the doors, the space, so that there's light shown out, we eliminate the energy efficiency that we pursue.
Commissioner Carr.
It's not so much to necessarily show the interior of the store, but it's really what the streetscape looks like as you're driving past, instead of seeing a long, long wall that's all brick, to have some variation and architectural detail. Now, that could be done with windows, as you're doing on the France Avenue side, which is attractive. It could also be done by perhaps variations of the depth of the building, going in at certain points for a few feet, just to create some more architectural detail, so it does not look like a warehouse wall.
Appreciate your input. Thanks.
Commissioner Graeble, how are you feeling?
I'll accept an amendment to put a condition in that we add some architectural features to the north wall. But I'm not going to require the developer, in my motion anyway, to move his warehouse or start throwing light out onto the street, just to throw light out onto the street.
How does that work for the secondary? All right. So, further discussion. We have a motion and an amendment to that motion. Well, I will just say that, while I think there's been a lot of hard work on this project, I think that if this was a normal zoning code, if this was a regular way that we do things, I would be probably inclined to grant the setback variances that are proposed in this situation. But I think when we're doing a PUD, I kind of agree with Commissioner Potts and that we're looking for something, something more than that. I think while there is some pedestrian circulation, I think that we reached a basic disagreement with the applicant about how to orient the site and what the process ought to be for that. So I will not be supporting the motion and would hope that we could accomplish something better. Further discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, or actually, maybe we should do a roll call. Jackie.
Commissioner Scherer.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Nay.
Commissioner Potts.
Nay.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Nay.
Commissioner Carr.
Aye.
Commissioner Forrest.
Aye.
Commissioner Graeble.
Aye.
Chair Sutton.
Nay. So the motion fails four to four. Is that the way it counted, right? Commissioner Schroeder.
I have a question for Plan Teague. Is a failed motion to approve an automatic denial, or should we have a motion to deny the proposal?
I'm not sure we're going to have a different outcome, where we just happen to have an evening where we don't have a ninth commissioner.
Do we vote for it?
You know, my own take, and Carrie, if you have, you know, protocol to the contrary, my own take is that, you know, what we do is we make recommendations to the council, and the council looks to us to hear our analysis of what the situation is. And I think we have given this ample discussion over the course of two meetings, and I don't think it's going to be possible for the council to not have heard enough from us. And I'm not sure that another motion accomplishes that any differently. I think we send them this information. I think they hear what we've said. They've heard some very spirited, competing viewpoints, and I think that will well educate them to make the decision that they have to make moving forward. So with that, I would suggest that we move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, gentlemen, to the applicants for all your hard work. So next up is preliminary rezoning to PUD, preliminary development plan and preliminary plat for Edina 555 LLC at 520-5125, 49th Street West, and 5117 and 5109, 49th Street Carrie, you're going to introduce this topic?
I am. I didn't have these pulled up in advance of the meeting. There we go. Okay. So before you is another request for a PUD. This property is located just west here of City Hall on Vernon Avenue and 49th Street. It's just east of the Holiday Gas Station. Existing on the site is a single-family home pictured here and a couple of apartment units. There are in total 10 units on this site. The apartments contain five and four units, and then the single-family home. The applicant is proposing to tear those three structures down and build a 17-unit townhome development. The site is 1.43 acres in size, so the proposed density that they're requesting here is 12 units per acre or within the medium-density range, the high end of the medium-density range in the comprehensive plan, which is between five and 12 units an acre. Just to show you a couple of renderings of what the project might look like.
So again, the request before the commission is for a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning to PUD preliminarily, and the preliminary development plan and plat. You may recall, you've seen a sketch plan, I believe, three times on this particular site. The first one included a 98-unit apartment building or senior complex. The next one, I believe, was 40-some units. And then just a couple of months ago, the applicant came through with an 18-unit townhome project, and that's what's pictured on the screen. Another elevation. So the request before you, what they've done is eliminated one of the units, and it's on this side here on the west side. And they've also provided some additional green space in between the units on Vernon Avenue. There was a lot of concern by both Planning Commission and City Council about it, just felt too tight for the site. A lot of density ranges had been thrown out by both Planning Commission and Council. So one of the decisions we'll have to make is, have they gone far enough in responding to some of those concerns that were raised at the sketch plan? So again, this is the sketch plan proposal. These are the four units that were proposed, one unit coming out of there, and then that green space added here. So this is a look at the site plan. You note that there are the three units here on the west side, and then that open space So the, whoop, let me go back. So the site plan would gain access off of 49th Street in this location here with a private road in between the units. All these units would open up to the inside of the site, so there wouldn't be the garages facing 49th or Vernon Avenue, which is a positive feature on the site. The applicant is proposing a pedestrian connection from 49th Street. This would be a public access along the western lot line that would connect up to the Grand View project, or the Grand View area to the south. So in a sense, this is, or could be viewed as the first development of the Grand View plan. This is a look at the framework as part of the Grand View development framework. The site that we're looking at is right here. It's not technically part of the Grand View plan, but again, they are providing a pedestrian connection and engaging Vernon Avenue. A traffic study has been done by Winkin Associates. Ed Terhar is here from Winkin and can answer any questions that you may have in that regard. But the result of the traffic study in adding the additional seven units to the site from the 10 that are there now is that the existing roadway can support this project. Quickly, in terms of landscaping, this is, they would be proposing overdouble what's required by city code in terms of overstory trees and the underground plantings. Building material that's proposed here would be architectural cast stone, some fiber cement, stained wood panels, and fiber cement trim. The applicant will go into more detail on those, but just to quickly show you some of the elevations, this would be a look on 49th Street. Again, another view on Vernon Avenue. You can see some of those building materials. A preliminary plat is also requested. There are 10 units on the site now. The park dedication requirement is $5,000 per unit, so they would be required to pay above and beyond the 10 units that are already there. So a $35,000 park dedication fee would be required at the time of final plat. Primary issues for consideration, is the medium-density reasonable for this site, and is the PUD zoning appropriate? Again, similar to our last request. Staff believes that the medium-density is appropriate, and the PUD is appropriate here as well. This site provides, it's a transitional land use to the single-family homes to the north. This is a difficult graphic here, but this is the comprehensive plan designation of low-density attached residential. The zoning map shows it a little clearer here. You see the single-family homes to the north. So this site kind of provides a transition into the more densely developed area to the So staff believes that it's an adequate transition to provide a buffer somewhat to the residential homes to the north. They're two-story structures, again, facing out with the garage, the garage entrances facing inward. Would be a vast improvement to the existing conditions on the site today. Again, staff believes it creates a more efficient use of the property. Again, it's providing that connection, pedestrian connection for this neighborhood directly into Grand View. The flexibility that's requested here in terms of the PUD, some of the items that wouldn't be met under the current zoning, well, first would be the density. Again, 11 units are allowed. But in regard to the setbacks, the setback requirements are based on the height of the buildings. So they're seeking some flexibility with the front setback on 49th Street here. They're requesting a 25-foot setback. And on Vernon, the required setbacks essentially would be 30 feet on all sides, so they're requesting flexibility on all sides. The closest setback on Vernon is 16 feet. The closest on the east side is 15 feet, adjacent to these single-family homes. And then on the west side, there's a 20-foot setback that's sought. The plan is laid out as such, there was some discussion in regard during the sketch plan about taking into consideration development of this property here to the east. This road could be extended and provide a continuation of this, the development as proposed this evening. So with that-
If I can just interrupt for a minute, too. I think there was some discussion about the potential reconfiguration of the off-ramp from Highway 100 that might make more space available there.
Correct. This, let's see, I might have a graphic that shows it a little better. Yeah, this area here is where the exit ramp comes in off of Highway 100. And in some of our discussions with MINDOT as part of the Grand View process, this potentially could go away, opening up-
Kind of squaring off that corner.
Kind of squaring this off, which would provide a potential extension of that private drive into that site. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and the conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. Any questions for Carrie?
Commissioner Schroeder.
Carrie, this is really a minor thing, but I look at the site plan that's on page 34, and the units on 49th have sidewalks coming out from every unit. The site plan on page 35, A35, they're aggregated together. It's not consequential to the density we're talking about, but it's kind of consequential to the urban design character of 49th. And I'm wondering if one of those is actually the one that's being presented.
Yeah, there were some changes. The applicant submitted- The applicant submitted some revised plans Friday morning as the packets were getting put together, and I believe that that's where the discrepancy is coming in. So we might ask the applicant. I didn't get a chance to make a good comparison there.
Other questions at this time? Commissioner Forrest.
I didn't get out there with my tape measure, but do you know how, why the street is in front of that?
The 49th Street?
Right.
I don't off the top of my head, but I can check it out here.
Yeah, it looks like it's not much more than 30 feet, 32 at the max. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. The applicant, I assume, is here and would like to make a presentation. Mr. Matzenbecker? Welcome back. Oh, one other question, and you can probably answer this for me as well as Carrie. Did three different sketch plans, did you go to the council all three times?
I'm sorry. Hey, but.
That's right. This has been through three different sketch plan reviews. Did you go to the council all three times? I know you came to us three times.
No.
Okay, so was the last one at the council, this most recent?
No, they've all just been sketch plans.
They've all just been here?
The first two, the 98 unit and the 48 unit, they did not go to the city council with, but the 18 unit they did.
Was, yes.
In October. So in October, you went to the council?
Right.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Matzenbecker.
Thank you. I will, notice last time I had some trouble. I will try not to fall over this time.
It's good to see you back.
Thank you for having us back, and I think, hopefully, this time is the charm, and we can move forward. We think we've made some great improvements, taking all your comments and the council's comments into consideration, and adjusting this development to really fit with a lot of the pieces that are in the comprehensive plan, as well as working with Carrie extensively to really make sure a lot of those comments that were made were addressed. So Commissioner Schroeder's comments, I don't know if we can zoom in to the front. I may have a larger piece here, but if there can be a zoom in there, we can, there we go. Along Vernon, was that the question, or was it along 49th? 49th, yeah. So we have the sidewalks coming off.
There you go.
Here. We ended up putting a plinth because the topography is very difficult in this site, and we're trying to balance the need of minimizing stairs for people walking up to the units from the front. One of the things we looked at in this new iteration was putting a plinth that kind of moves along the property line here, that raises everything up by about two feet. We're facing that with the land and stone that's found on the building and around the city, kind of recalling those low walls that are part of the city heritage, and framing that as kind of this beginning space to allow people to walk up from the street and onto these spaces. And because of the space we had available with the property line and the setback there, and to meet those grades and to keep them as minimum as possible, especially at this end where it gets very, the grade increases, that was one of the reasons for changing, making that change. One of the things we looked at here as well was, in the previous iteration, there was some kind of angular walls and walkways moving up to the buildings along 49th. And as we looked at that, we felt that that was a little bit walled off and keeping a little bit more enclosed, and we wanted to open that up to the street and to the neighbors across and to offer some more public eyes on the street. So we have these patios that are at the top of this plinth that are public opens, or open space for the units, so you can move out from your unit and have some picnic tables and things out here, some storage space under the stairs. And then the outside of the stairs are faced in some of the cultured stone that Chris was, will show you in a moment, and that is part of the building faces as well. Some of that stone material will be, cast stone will be on the face of those pieces. So those are some of the major changes down on this face from the site plan perspective. As Carrie mentioned, one of the other things we did was open up this space here in between to allow access for pedestrians who are moving along Vernon if they want to come visit. People, they can walk in here and walk to individual units, or they can walk to the center and take this access path down if they're visiting a friend here, we'll let them in, or to this direction. The other main piece that we looked at in the amenity was, as you are aware, this bike and pedestrian connection space that moves from 49th to Vernon. One of the things that we did was really open the throats of that on either end, so that at this end, it widens out, kind of has a more welcoming space also at this end, to draw folks in and to allow them to understand that it is a public way, it's not a private space, and to pull folks up. We've added about a one-foot-wide bike curb along the stairs. We have some smaller stairs that you'll see throughout this walk, as well as some larger stairs called parons, so that it's some more vertical pieces here, and then as you gradually move up, you can walk your bike on this curb up. So we wanted to keep people from doing some hardcore mountain biking down the stairs in front of these units. So we're offering people an access way to pull their bikes up and down, but to keep it a little bit more calm and respectful. And those are about the extent of the site plan changes. I will turn it over to my colleague, Chris Palkowicz, who will walk you through some of the facade and material changes on the building.
So to speak further about 49th, I'll show, here was what we had originally sent to Carrie with the larger walls at this point, and through further development of the exterior materials of the building and just getting a better feel for the site, we felt that to be more appropriate to re-explore how we were looking at it, that we felt that this was a little too walled off and not as friendly to the neighborhood at this, at this location. So the updated plan here, let me go to a different one here. So here, one more time, from the other angle on 49th is the more walled-off piece. The revised plan here showing the, each unit having its own entry, I think really softens it and opens the units up much more to 49th and creates a much nicer building and much more appropriate to the neighborhood at this point. We also, as we were looking through the building materials, we had some adjustments. You could see in the previous sketch plans, we were just showing block buildings. We hadn't really gotten into it that much. And with the massing we have here, we're trying to find the right fit between the, really working within the neighborhood and being this somewhat transitional space. So material-wise, we really wanted to fit into the neighborhood. So that's what lent us to, starting off with the materials. And in our current design, we have architectural cast stone as kind of a main feature as, you know, part of this land and stone on the landscape and then kind of working up into the building to give a feeling of, you know, longevity and quality of the building materials. We also have fiber cement panels on here which are, which have recycled content and also have a longevity to them, and are very residential, you know, applicable building material. Finally, we've also brought in some stained wood into this as well to kind of warm up the pallet a little bit and really continue with the, along the residential feel and to try to really blend this into the neighborhood as much as possible. The view from the other direction on 49th. Along Vernon, it's going to be two-story walk-ups here with just a few stairs up. There'll also be some gathering space in the front of these units. And then from the other direction on Vernon as well with the, with the path working its way up through the edge of the site there.
And if I can just point out, as well along here, one of the nice things about how the topography works with this design in this location is there's a little bit of a berm here that exists, and the front doors to these units are sunken a little bit below that, and so it offers a little bit of protection from the vehicles going by, any pedestrians walking by as well. It gives a little bit of a buffer from Vernon on that sense and offers some protection there. It is not high enough to hide anyone in a crime perspective or a crime planning through environmental design issue. It's quite low, but it gives a sense of separation.
I wanted to add just a couple more pieces in regards to the building, that we are taking into account sustainable measures, certainly through the, through the quality materials, through their sustainable aspects and their longevity. We're also going to, as a standard for these units, have high-efficiency HVAC systems, use low VOC paints, and Energy Star appliances, as well as quality windows on this as well.
With that, we stand for questions. We agree with staff recommendation for this, and we would love your support for these items, and I will stand to answer any questions. We think they have met quite an extensive amount of the goals and principles in the comprehensive plan. I do have some of those, if we care to get into those, some of those, if there's questions about that, I have some information there as well, but thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Forrest.
I have a number of things here that, some questions I came with. The sidewalk on the west side, so that does have steps, so it's not fully accessible. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The, are there any units that do not have stairs?
Interior, exterior.
Both. Either one, either one.
Exterior, they all have stairs. Interior, they do as well.
Okay, so where I have a difference of opinion here or tension is the fact that in your letter and in the council's comments, there are these references to life-cycle housing, and none of it is fully accessible to anybody who is, challenges with mobility, is in a wheelchair or whatever. Parking for guests is a concern of mine, that's why I was asking about the width of the street. I know you say you have one or two places outside of the garages where people can park, where guests can park, but, you know, that doesn't take into account a baby shower, a Super Bowl party, or, you know, the kind of thing where you may have anywhere from 20 to 40 people visiting. In those cars, then, would impact probably, most likely, the street in front of the units, and that's a big concern of mine. And I do have some concerns about, regarding the traffic trip generation report that came out. It seems, it's hard for me to grasp how, you know, it results in one additional trip per day or something like that. I mean, it was, seemed like a very minimal difference, but.
The traffic is something that I do want to get to, and maybe you may want to hold your questions, because I do think we're, I anticipate we're going to get some comments from the public on the traffic, and I want to hear from the traffic engineer as well.
Okay, and it's 32 feet in height, and that's with flat roofs, right? Not gabled roofs? Okay. Okay, and the rest I can. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Just a quick question. There's apparently stained wood panels, and where are those located?
Those are on the bays on each unit, kind of as the typical design through here. Also brought in on the side elevation and on the rear elevations, there's an additional bay of having some stained.
And what is the durability, do you think, of that staining? Are we going to see that deteriorate in five years, or?
It, staining wood will require more upkeep than not, and that's why we're using some of the other materials that have a much longer life cycle, but we felt that the warmth of the stained wood would really bring something nice to the units, and as being condominium, it's kind of a, you know, homeowner-required piece of the upkeep then at that point.
Okay.
And I would add, too, you know, similar to Pella windows or some of the Anderson windows, the nicer windows that are out there that are wood casement windows that last hundreds of years. My home's over 110 years old and has wood windows that are still in great shape. So if they're taken care of and they're stained properly as we're recommending, that should be no concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for the applicant? I did want to ask about the 32 feet. So how, given all the topography here, how are we measuring? How do we get to 32 feet? Where are we starting? I know where we're finishing, but where are we starting on each of these units?
Usually, starting, different cities have different methods for measuring. I may refer to Carrie on where they take it from.
Carrie, if you can help us on that, that's fine, too.
It's measured from existing grade, so I'm just taking it from their plans where they indicated where that.
Existing grade at the front of each unit?
At the front of the unit, right.
So not, because some of these, for instance, the ones you're showing on the graphic right now on Vernon, obviously, on the backside of that, it's taller.
Right, where the garage is.
Right.
I can answer that more thoroughly, Commissioner, that the 32 feet is more on the 49th Street side, you know, kind of base of where that patio is to the, to the top of the main roof.
So where your, what was the term you used for the little shelf that you're building on?
The plinth.
Plinth. So from the plinth to the top?
So from the plinth up, yes, and.
It's 32 feet.
It's 32 feet.
Okay.
And on the Vernon side, where we are dug more into the topography, we almost have an entire story into the topography, we're roughly 22 feet on the Vernon side.
Okay, so the profile from the street level on the Vernon side is going to look more like 22 feet.
Yes.
32 feet on the 49th Street side.
Correct.
And our comprehensive plan talks about generally favoring pitched roofs as opposed to flat roofs. Can you talk a little bit about why you're making this selection, rather than, I noticed on some of the previous graphics, it also talked about pitched roofs?
Yes, thank you for the question. One of the reasons, and I, we'll go back and forth with Chris here, as we looked at the surrounding context of the neighborhood, being the age of those homes and the roof style of the majority of these homes that are immediately adjacent are hip roofs, which are obviously flatter in profile, they do have some peaks. So we felt, again, as the transition piece that was right up against Vernon, that would transition into more commercial and retail across Vernon and down into the Grand View area, that this flat roof might be a great way to transition from that into the hip-roof neighborhood.
Further beyond that, we had additional concerns by, of height, by looking at the pitched roofs, that the, you know, by getting the unit that we wanted, by adding that square footage, it made the units on 49th roughly six, six or seven feet taller, and we, you know, we're concerned about that.
Even measuring to the midpoint, because the amount of room you'd have to create space for, you'd have to go up further.
Mm-hmm.
And so on 49th, are you talking, I mean, I'm just looking at one of the graphics on 49th, it's two stories of living space with the garage underneath, it's just that some of the garage starts, the garage is basically at grade level, correct?
Correct. There's also some living space on the front side of the garage as well that has access out to the patio.
So help me understand that. So there's, when you say living spaces, are they like basement space? Is there a third story of living space, or is that just where you exit the garage and then you go up the stairs?
No, there's, we're going to get a floor plan here to point that out for you. Kind of like a, almost little split, so you have the garage you come into, and then there's a little hallway room in front of that garage, which could then be used to access.
Like a mudroom, or are we talking about a den or a?
So we're kind of opening it up, that could be a den or a bedroom at this point with access out to the patio space.
Other questions?
And then, excuse me for just one moment, to address Commissioner Forrest's, or Forrest's comment previous of the accessibility, we are designing them in a way that any of the residents could retrofit in an elevator into the, into the unit. So that would allow that accessibility that they could drive up and then have an elevator. Yeah.
Commissioner Carr.
I was just looking at the plans, and I noticed that some of the garages appear to have windows and other garage doors. have windows and other garage doors have windows, others do not. Is that correct?
That is, that may be some of the issue between the plans that were sent on Friday. All will have, we're looking at frosted glass windows on those so that you can get lighting in, but keep a level of privacy and security.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask a question about the floor elevation, the first floor elevation of the units on 49th relative to the street elevation. You talked about the elevation, there's a plinth there, but I want to know when you get to the front door or to the main living level, how high above the street level is that?
It's, from the street level, it's roughly, you know, as it varies unit to unit, being at the slope of the street, center unit 10 and a half feet to the, where the, all the stairs go up to the main front entry.
So can you tell me, is it a consistent floor elevation from one unit to the next or does, do they step up and down?
We have a split. Three units are one elevation, the other three are one foot, one foot difference than that.
Can you tell me what the, what that elevation is?
Just a moment.
One of the things we were doing is because the grade is so extensive on this unit, we wanted to try and use that as the datum to set and get the minimum amount of distance that we could and still work with the grade here, making sure that these then as you stepped up got lower and lower.
This is a more preliminary sketch that I've pulled out here. The grades we have are, of the unit plans themselves are just slightly lower than this, but it's a six inch transition here and roughly 940, I believe they're all 939 now, and on this one, 939 and a half. So trying to step, working with the grade to minimize the height of the overall buildings.
So just to be clear, on the left hand edge, we're 14 and a half feet above the street.
We're roughly 14 feet in the final version, yes.
Commissioner Forrest.
Carrie, is that where we're measuring the height from? Are we measuring it from where they planned their first floor to be or the ground, or the existing current ground level and we're looking at the height of the new structures?
Yeah, it was my understanding from the plans, we were measuring from the existing ground level up. So that would be the 32 feet on 49th.
Okay. And so, okay. Because the street level is about 10 feet lower than the elevation of these, it's around 930, 923 to 930. So there's...
Okay. Any further comments or questions at this time? What I'd like to do, and I want to get to, it looks like there's some folks here who'd like to comment, but I think that there's going to be some questions about traffic. So I'd like to have a little discussion about that. And Carrie, can you explain to us again how this whole, how we arrive at a traffic engineer, whose traffic engineer it is and how they get hired and all that business?
Right. It is a traffic engineer that the city hires at the expense of the applicant. In this case, Wenkin Associates was selected to do the traffic study. So Ed Terhar is here. So the applicant paid the fees, but the city hired the consultant.
Okay. So Mr. Terhar, can you come forward and give us a brief review of your work? I'll tell you that, yeah, if you have something to show on there, I think that's a good place to be.
Okay. Yes, my name is Ed Terhar. I'm a traffic engineer with Wenk Associates. We're located in Maple Plain. And we completed a traffic impact study for this site. I believe you have a copy of the report that we completed. And you just want me to give a brief summary of the whole study?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. We, when we first started this project, we had some discussions with city staff to determine what the scope of the project should be and what we should be looking at for the project. And it was determined that we should look at the impacts for the surrounding street system and then focusing on three of the intersections that are nearby, Vernon and Interlochen, Interlochen and Brookside, and then Brookside and 49th. Those were the three nearby intersections that we looked at for this study. As with the typical traffic impact study, we started with data collection. We collected turn movement data at all three of these intersections, both morning and afternoon peak periods on typical weekdays. And using that information, then, we developed traffic forecasts, which account for the proposed development, which is the 17 units, but also accounts for the removal of the existing 10 units. And there's some difference there in the types of units that are being proposed. There are townhouses versus apartments and a single family house. The trip generation is based on data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which has a vast database of information for different types of uses. So the trip generation information is shown in the report on page 4-2, I believe. And you can see that we've accounted for, in the AM peak hour, the proposed project, which is 17 townhouses, generates, just in the AM peak hour, a total of seven trips. That's based on this, on the data presented by ITE. The existing uses are a single family house, which in the AM generates on average one trip, and the apartments, nine units, which generate five trips. So once you take those out, you get a net increase of one trip for the AM peak hour. Similarly, for the PM peak hour, if you do the math through the table there, we end up with two trips. And on a daily basis, we have 29 trips that are net added by the project. On a daily basis, it's a 24-hour period on a typical weekday. So that is the amount that's added net by the project. The reason there's some difference is, based on the ITE data, townhouses actually generate a lower number of trips than apartments or single family houses. And you can see that due to that difference, we end up, even though we have 17 units and we're taking away 10, we end up with a fairly small increase. That's the reason for that difference. The reason for the relatively small increase for the trip generation. We then took that information and added that to the existing volumes on the roadway and analyzed the intersections. And overall, the impact of this development is very small on the surrounding roadway system. The number of trips added can be accommodated by the roadway system. None of the level service movements for, the level service for any of the movements change with this project. The numbers are small enough that we don't see any impact. That doesn't mean that the surrounding streets aren't busy. Especially the Interlochen and Vernon intersection, as you're, I'm sure aware of, is busy at times. And as shown in the level service results, there are a couple movements that operate at level service E. We don't have any failures. The intersection doesn't fail. But we do have a couple intersections, movements that are level service E, which typically is below our standard of D. While I've spent a fair amount of time out there watching traffic at the intersection, there are times when it does back up, especially the southbound left, but for the most part, it was able to clear the intersection. This would vary, obviously, if there's some poor weather conditions, if things are slippery.
I'm sorry, southbound left from Interlochen onto Vernon?
From Interlochen to Vernon, yes.
East? Okay.
To go east onto Vernon, you're correct. That is a busy movement. But overall, the impact of this development is minimal on that. Doesn't say that there's, you know, there are issues at times at that intersection. And if there is further development planned for this area, as may be happening in the future, this intersection will be an important one to look at further as things develop further.
Can you, can you speak to the, you know, I think we'll probably get some concern expressed. And I know in some of the written materials we've already gotten, it's a pretty unique setting back there. There's one entrance and the same exit out of that neighborhood and there are many more homes as you snake your way back through those streets. And this is the only way to get out. I hear you saying 29 trips a day. Do you have an opinion or thoughts on how that impacts kind of the neck of the ingress egress to the neighborhood?
Sure. Yeah, that was one of the intersections that we looked at was 49th and Brookside. And the level service, based on the, you know, the level service standards are acceptable. We had As and Bs for all of the movements, for all of the scenarios. So once again, the number of trips added has minimal impact on that, on the operations of that intersection and on 49th Street itself.
And then the other one I was going to ask about is as you come up the hill on Brookside to take a left turn going south on Interlochen, that's always challenging, particularly at the peak hours. Did you study that as well?
Yes. That actually operates at level service D today and will continue to operate that all the way through post-development of this project.
So my intuition that that's a rugged spot is good, but you're saying it's not going to be made worse by this?
Correct. Yeah. And level service D typically is the acceptable standard. It's not ideal, but in an urban situation, D is acceptable.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Forrest.
I'm wondering about the presumption that townhomes generate fewer trips and I, it just seems like an out-of-date presumption to me as far as who's living in the, who lives in townhomes.
Sure. The data collected and presented by ITE is, includes hundreds of studies throughout the country. So it's based on a large database of information and that is the result of the information that has been collected. There's a similar number of studies for apartments. The trip generation rates are very similar. The townhouse generation is just a little bit lower.
Does that take into account, I mean, what, how often is that updated, that information?
It's updated every two or three years. Information, and a new version just came out right before this study. So it is the newest information available.
Now, if we go with the presumption that this is life cycle housing, say couples whose kids are grown, they want to downsize, does that affect that presumption at all versus townhomes where you have young families with maybe one stay-at-home parent?
Yes, it does. If this was, there are categories that are specific for senior housing. Not saying that this would be that, but if you start to lean that way, if you look at that data, senior housing is much lower. It's much lower than even what is shown here.
Well, I'm thinking to, you know, maybe a two professional family too.
Yeah. And that would be, that would probably be on the other end. So, you know, we're somewhere in between. We're looking at the average. So usually that's, you know, that's what we go with and that's acceptable.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do now is open the public hearing and ask those who are in attendance and have comments that they'd like to make to come forward. What we'd like to do is have you name, give us your name and address. One of the side podiums is probably best. And tell us your thoughts.
Okay.
Welcome.
My name is Michelle Anderson. I live on 5112 West 49th Street, which is directly across the street from what is proposed. I appreciate being able to have a voice in this and being able to discuss with you guys my concerns. I did write a letter. I'm not going to repeat it verbatim. I don't know if you guys get the letters. Okay, so...
Yes, we did get, we did get your letter. It was on the desk this evening. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yep. So I just wanted to say that I am absolutely thrilled at the prospect of redevelopment across the street. I'm absolutely not against that. I'm not against progress. I'm excited of the potential for the Grandview vision when it eventually comes into fruition. My husband and I love our house. We want to stay there for many, many, many years. We want to kind of fix up the house instead of tearing it down and creating another big house. And I feel that a lot of the neighbors kind of feel that way as well. We're very proud of our 1950s Ramblers and the style and differences in the style that it carries. And we're a diverse neighborhood, all sorts of different professions and walks of life. So that being said, I am opposed to the rezoning for the PUD from the current to the PUD for a couple of different reasons. But I feel that what they're proposing is too dense. And it feels a little claustrophobic to me. Also, I did review, I kind of became a little bit of an expert on what you guys experience or expect out of PUD zoning. And I don't feel like this project really truly grasps what you guys are going for with the PUD. That was my read on it. That was my take on it. So to me, again, the density and the size of the units seems to be too much, especially the fact that there's not enough green space. Both aesthetically and functionally, it does not feel like there's enough green space. And in fact, they're going to be fined because there isn't enough green space. So we kind of already know. I know that two acres seems to be kind of a number that comes up in the literature about what is appropriate for PUD zoning. And this is only 1.4 acres. So again, adding to the fact that we're trying to put a lot on a little bit smaller of a lot for the PUD zoning. I feel that the design is imposing. I feel like it's too many units. And the style of the units also feels a little bit imposing. And it doesn't feel like the 1950s Rambler feel to me on 49th Street. I do feel that the traffic flow is going to be an issue. You know, I have Mondays off, so I'm not in the commutes, you know. There's one, you know, we all have different schedules. Who knows? They picked, I don't know if they just pick one day, but anyway, I won't belabor that one. But it is our only entrance and exits. Again, the green space keeps coming up to me in particular because I live right across the street. Yes, they'll have trees, but A, there's probably not going to be very big. You know, it's going to be like 15 years before they're nice and covering the buildings potentially. But I want to see some grass. That's what we have the advantage of seeing now. And not only you guys know, obviously, that grass helps to absorb the water. It doesn't feel like, it's a lot of buildings and it's a lot of pavement. It doesn't feel like there's enough, and because of the grading and how steep it is, I feel that there's going to be a lot of runoff of water. So I think that's going to be a concern. And then also, where are they going to put the snow? There's not a lot of wiggle room in their driveways and the main road. And I'm worried that they're going to be pushing it across the street and onto my side of the street. Parking, parking is always kind of an issue in that area. I like, they kept on showing a picture of a car parked on the other side of the street, which is actually illegal. We can only park on one side of the street, which is directly in front of those proposed buildings. I like the current zoning. Six of these units, the person can't even park in their own driveway of six of these townhome units. So, and that's what they're counting on for guest parking. So I think it's unreasonable to expect there will be open street spaces to accommodate these six townhomes that can't even park their own car in the driveway, let alone some guests. So I feel like it's going to keep on curving into the neighborhood and people will have to park further into the neighborhood. And again, clogging up the streets, making it feel a little bit claustrophobic. Trying to keep this short, but in the current zoning, those six units wouldn't exist. And problem solved, I kind of feel like. So nuisance and safety issues, especially for me, I have two small children. The traffic, not only for construction, but also just extra traffic coming out of the townhomes, I feel like is going to be an issue. I'm wondering about headlights, you know, showing, shining into my bedroom, which is right out in front of my house. We have a nice big huge bay window as most 1950s Ramblers do. I'm wondering what kind of lighting they're going to have, if they're going to have, you know, if there's six fully lit townhomes, if that's going to be an issue for us. I kind of touched on the aesthetics of the neighborhood and how I don't feel that it fits in. So I won't belabor that point. I just, I think it's an inappropriate use of the PUD from what I understand of it. I feel like not enough is given back to us as the community and the neighbors, the neighborhood, to allow such a densely packed set of... the neighborhood, to allow such a densely packed set of townhomes to be put right across the street from us, you know. This is what I have to live with forever and I want it to be the right fit. I'm not against something going in there. I think it's a great idea, but I want it to be the right fit. I want it to look good. I want it to really fit our neighborhood. And then I am concerned about the, the room for expansion and what that might bring, you know, will it stop at just that one other lot? Is it going to keep, excuse me, winding around? So.
Okay. Ms. Anderson, could I ask you to wrap up? Thank, I think you've made many of the points that you've made in the letter and I appreciate the, the articulate way that you're making them. Any, anything else to add?
Oh, I just did kind of want to just use my little ending of, you know, I've been following all the different plans and the analogy that I came up with is that the current plan to put 17 townhomes on the site is like trying to park a Hummer vehicle into a compact-only parking spot. But previously, they were trying to put in an 18-wheeler and a monster truck, so it's getting better, but it's still a Humvee in a compact spot. And I realize that we probably won't get a compact car into our compact spot, but at least maybe we can get it down to the size of a Cadillac with both the style and, you know, it's not that big, but it's big. So, thank you for your time and I appreciate.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah. Anyone else?
Hello. Name is Steve Rusk at 5040 Hankerson Avenue. If I could get a clarification on the western walkway, bikeway, what's the width of that?
The bikeway here is between six and eight feet. We have some room to play with. I think it was shown at six feet right now and then widening out at each end.
Okay. I'm, Jim Havelin can confirm this. I was the first bike dyna chair. And the gradient that you're on, there's a lot of altitude change between the top and bottom of that. At six feet wide, it's still dangerous. With gravity, you're going to hit 25 miles an hour just coasting down that hill on a bicycle. Average bike, cruiser bike is 36 inches wide. You have no margin for error on that. So I would not call that a bikeway. I would not let bikes go on it. As a professional cyclist of high skill, I'll ride downtown with the buses. I would not take something that narrow because people can pop out. It's just not safe. And also, the, in the traffic, Morningside and Forty-Ninth is a big corner, a lot of cyclists. It's a main thoroughfare through. And if everybody's having to exit Forty-Ninth onto the Morningside to head up to...
Brookside, you mean?
What?
Brookside, you mean?
Brookside, excuse me.
Okay, sorry.
Brookside. You have a hard time with traffic the way it is, and I can tell you on a bicycle coming down from Interlock and I'm hitting 35 miles an hour unless I'm riding my brakes. And the traffic on that road of residents that are currently there, they're very courteous, but I can tell you when somebody new moves in because it's, they have to learn. You don't want to go left there, especially a bicycle that's small and is going at an extreme speed. Any increase in traffic is a problem. That bikeway is a death trap if you let bikes go down it, on that property. And I had never seen a look at that thing, but aesthetically, it looks like a double-wide, double-high trailer lot to me. I mean, I, the look of that flat roof thing is just not very attractive, and I can imagine what the people that have to go buy it every day would think. But the character of the neighborhoods in Edina is changing so much as we add larger places, higher density, and the people that have moved in there years ago and plan to live there for a long time don't deserve to be abused by high-density, just increased property taxes or whatever. But the flat roofs are probably there to get the zoning ordinance so they can get the square footage in for height. But it, that's ugly looking. That's my personal opinion. But from a bike stamp, standpoint, that western thing, I'd close it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rusk. Other comments?
Commissioner, I'm Tony Wagner. I live at 5120 Forty-Ninth Street, directly across the street from the proposal. Couple of points that I've noticed with it that I think would be interesting. The point that was brought up about the height of the building, I guess I still don't think we have a accurate assessment of how tall that building will be, relevant to the rest of the neighborhood. So far, what I've gathered tonight, it'd be 42 feet higher than the street, would be my understanding, at the base of the driveway, including their 10-foot platform plus the 32-foot building. I'd also be curious to know the commission's feelings on, I noticed in the plans that it calls for rooftop decks on all of the units, which I think would mean that no one along that street would have a private backyard in any way anymore. The other two points I have are combination of both snow plowing, where they'd put snow, because it doesn't seem to have any green space or any extra space to put it in. And then directly out in front of that unit, the storm sewer runoff drains, those actually run into a ditch next to the railroad tracks and they drain down and into the rest of the, of the houses down the way. And so creating that much more runoff, I guess I'd be curious to know how that would be addressed because obviously some of the houses down the way might actually have some flooding issues based on how much water is put through that system.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Ian Abel. I live at 5104 Milpon Place. It's about a block in from the area we're talking about. It's in that neighborhood. We've lived there 21 years. Couple of quick items. This is, I think, the fourth, the fourth proposal that's been placed. I like it the best of everything so far. It's the least dense of anything. I'm not going to comment on the aesthetics. It looks like it might be okay. As far as parking goes, people address parking. The parking for the apartments is already an issue in the sense that people do park outside the apartments. There's, there is often parking there except when the parking isn't allowed in winter. The Grand View access, I think, is a great idea. I'm not 29 anymore and as you can tell, so having the walk, walkway access up there would be great because there is no easy access at the moment, other than walking up the Brookside, up the side of Brookside, except for a dirt track up by the side of the railroad track, which is pretty awful in the winter. The other things that I'd like to quickly sort of mention are the fact that they said that they would be putting possible elevator access in those buildings. We live in a house that's way too big for us now. We've had both kids move out. We love the neighborhood. We love the area. We'd love to stay. If they built those townhouses and they have some sort of access that makes it more reasonable, I'd quite likely buy one. So I think it's a reasonable thing. The, I think, I think that's about it, yeah. The traffic, also traffic in general in that place. We lived there 21 years. If you lay down in the middle of the street, and I work at home some of the time, I've, I've done that off and on for the 21 years. I'm in the neighborhood a lot of the time. I'm gone some of the time. You can lay down in the street most times of the day and you're not going to get run over by anything short of maybe a bicycle or somebody walking their dog. Traffic's not going to be an issue for eight months.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments? Come on up. You've been warming up to it for a while. You got the shorts drawn?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Leslie Losi. That's Scott Losi back there. We live at 5105 West Forty-Ninth Street. We've been there almost 19 years and we're directly...
Right there. Right next to.
Oh, you're right to the east?
Right here. Right here. No.
Here to the east, okay.
Right there.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so anyway, that building is going to be, we're going to be on display 24/7. Looks like they can look into our bathrooms and our bedrooms, our backyards, our front yards, everywhere. We won't have any privacy whatsoever. So I'm just kind of concerned that they want that setback, but yet we're not going to get anything out of this. So I'm really concerned about that. But the, the other thing is that the traffic is going to be a problem because we come and go and it's hard to pull out of our driveway when there's traffic coming and going right now. And when people are pulling in, we pull out of our driveway and we can't get out of the driveway because there's the traffic that's bad. They took the stop sign down, so people don't slow down. So it's really hard for us to get in and out of our driveway. So that's going to be a problem. And then Michelle, was that Michelle? She brought up a lot of good points, so I'll, I'll dub her points that she had said.
Well done. We're, we're, we're quite fond of not making the same point twice. She made them quite well.
Yeah. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Losi.
Hi. Hi, I'm Gail Kruzowski-Hedelbet. I live directly across 5116 West Forty-Ninth Street. Two points. Transition. Transition from what? Devani's? So we're talking transition from Grand View to the houses on West Forty-Ninth Street. Well, isn't Vernon and Devani's a transition enough? So those homes need to look like homes. We don't want them to look like retail spaces. The second one they brought up was privacy and security with some frosted windows. My driveways, or my garage is probably, what, 30 feet back, my garage windows. I don't feel I have an issue about privacy because I'm 30 feet back. Their privacy issues, is that because they're too close to the street? Just some things to think about.
Thank you. Other comments? Last call.
I'll go.
If you were waiting to make sure you were last, this might be your chance.
Thank you again for hearing all of our comments. My name is Sherri Wagner. You heard from my husband before. I'm at 5120 West Forty-Ninth Street, directly across from this proposed project. As an architect trained in my background, I am very concerned about the actual size of the units. They are currently proposing 3,100 to 3,600 square feet, which is larger, larger than almost every single house in the neighborhood. I don't know how that's considered downsizing, and I'm also concerned about the level of stairs of who they would consider marketing to. Second, the setbacks. I am completely for maintaining the current zoning to keep it at 30 feet on all four sides. I feel that with 17 units, it's just too close and compact. I completely understand where they're coming from as an attempt to transition and bridge across, but if you drive down into my neighborhood with the grade that's currently there, it feels completely different. So I would just like you to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Other comments? All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
In a second?
Seven.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, so the public hearing is closed. There were a couple of questions that I would like to try and address before we have the planning commission discussion. Ms. Anderson brought up stormwater and snow removal. Carrie, can you, do you have anything that you can tell us about each of those?
We do share the same concern about snow removal. That was noted in the city engineer's report as well. So staff definitely has a, has concern in that regard.
Mr. Motzenbacher, you want to address that?
Chair Staunton, commissioners, thank you. Stormwater is, we have a civil engineer on board there, in process of creating a, a stormwater plan that meets all acceptable standards. So that will be, that was included in this, the sheets were included in the submission.
And is the plan to do that on-site? Is it under?
Yes, it's all on-site, in, in underground tanks. And then with the landscaping that we're providing around all the buildings that will infiltrate as well. So we are taking care of it all on-site.
So how about the snow?
And the snow will be, will work with, I may refer to the applicant if I'm incorrect, but I, we are going to be removing the snow and we'll take it off-site.
Okay. There was also a question, I thought Mr. Rusk brought up an interesting point about bike travel. I have, I have biked down that hill as well, and so I kind of had a flashback when he was describing it.
And I am happy to re-clarify that.
Right. If you've addressed that, or if Mr. Terhor has anything, I don't know if in the traffic study you did any examination of, of vehicles getting along with bicycles in that area? Okay. So anything you want to add on that point?
I guess I was unclear if, if the resident was referring to the bike path we're proposing along the side, or if he was referring to the road.
No, well, he was referring both things. So, so I understood you to say with respect to the, to the path that goes from Forty-Ninth up to Vernon, that you're not intending for that to be used to ride your bike.
Correct.
You're intending to walk it and you've created some path along the side. And it's actually got stairs, right?
Correct. Yes.
But the exit out of Forty-Ninth onto Brookside, as you, cyclists, we, our opportunity to get up to the greenway, you cut down Brookside and then up Brookside to cross the tracks. So you're coming down a pretty steep hill there as you're exiting Forty-Ninth. Have you given any attention to that?
We hadn't, as it was being off the site and not something we could really control. We didn't really look at bike travel there. We were trying to address it with the amenities provided on our site.
Okay. Questions, other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Forrest.
Was parking included in the traffic study?
Well, I'll have...
No, it was not.
Any professional opinion on that?
I haven't looked at it in great detail, but there are parking, the garages for each unit, so they would accommodate the residents and some space for visitors and, and on-street parking would be available.
And I, if I could, Chair Staunton, Commissioner Forrest, just to clarify, there was a question about not enough parking for each. And in the site plan, it may appear as if these particular driveway spots are smaller than, for instance, this spot. But I just want to assure you that we have created a cantilever in the building so that the driveway are all the same depth across the entire site. So each one can park two cars. It just noses in under the building. It hangs out. So while that may appear like it wouldn't hold it, it does because it moves in. And these, on this spot, are three-car garages and they have space for two cars pulled off as well.
There was also a question about rooftop decks. Is that part of the, what you're proposing?
Yes, there are some rooftop decks in the middle. Chris, I don't know if you want to clarify. I think they're located in this range.
To clarify on that, we were looking at them not as a for-sure, but a potential amenity that the homeowner could upgrade to at that point for the condominium.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I just wanted to assure the commission and bring back a little bit some of the comments about the grass. There, there is, from the curb line back to where our plinth starts, about 15 to 18 feet of turf grass all the way along that, and then an extensive grass area in front of this location. Then, all the front yards on top of the plinth before you get to the patios are planted extensively with ground covers and shrubs and annuals and perennials, as well as if you move onto the Vernon side, each of these front yards have extensive plantings surrounding their own little patios as well. So there's actually quite a bit of planting on-site and anywhere that there's not driveway is planted. The screening on the east side, there are no windows on these units in this location. So there's no windows here, and this is extensive, large, evergreen plantings to do some serious screening to buffer those two spaces.
Commissioner, share.
I think there's some confusion, and I count myself among the confused. If, if I look at the Forty-Ninth Street units, and I want to talk about height, if I, you just used a phrase, I think, a minute ago, "where the plinth begins." So let's take that as our, our setting, stepping off point. How tall is it to the top of one of these buildings from where the plinth begins?
I believe that's 30 feet.
Okay.
But it's, but it's, it's 14 from there to the first floor elevation?
Uh, no, the first floor is right at the ele, A floor, I should say, is at that level. So you can walk out from those units. level, so you can walk out from those units. They have a, a level on that ground plane that walks out where the garage comes in on the back.
So, the middle floor.
You can come in. Then, above that is the first, above the garage floor, then is the living, the first living floor, which is accessed by those stairs in the front.
So, which you get from, you get from 14 feet to 30 feet, so you-
So, then there's a-
16 feet for the next two store, two floors?
I, I think.
It's not making sense to me, I guess I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry to jump in.
No, that's fine. I think we could maybe, if we have some elevations here, I'll let Chris walk you through those a little bit.
Uh, commissioners, so you have a clear understanding here. It's, uh, three stories in all. The, the plinth does come up two feet, and the, the buildings are overall roughly 32 feet tall. With the plinth, it makes the building roughly 30 feet tall to the roofline. The, the stairs you're seeing rise up to the, the first floor here, or the main building floor at that point. So, a, as we're talking about the worst condition, here to here is 14 feet. On the best condition, it's more like, uh, 10 feet at that point. So, it's, as the, the street moves, it's adjusting to the grade of the street. But it's, uh, both buildings are remaining fairly consistent in the height.
So, the maximum height from the cement pad of Level A to the top of the building is 30?
Roughly, yes, to the, to the top roof. Like, well, I, it's hard because there's, there's, as the street varies, the, you know, it's varying the height. The, the buildings are consistent in height, it's the street grade is adjusted.
So, the buil, all right, the buildings are going to run 30 to 32 above street grade?
Yes.
And on top of that, we may add on some of those on that street, the, the proposed roof space?
Uh, yes, there may be, uh-
Backing up to Vernon, that's not an attractive feature. I really like what is done on Vernon. I think that look and the engagement of the street, I think it does make a lot of sense in terms of what we hope for, for Grandview and, and connecting with that and starting to make that transition. I also really like, you know, the use of the PUD to do, one of the things we talk about in the Plan Unit Development Ordinance is hiding the parking. So, we don't have, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about residential redevelopment lately, and, you know, people who are, um, not happy with the front of a house just being a garage. So, I like the fact that we're trying to hide some of that behind it. And so, I think there's, I, obviously, the pathway, the, the two access, pedestrian accesses from 49th to Vernon are real positive as well. That's a long trip around if you have to go all the way up past the Holiday Station and around, especially if we're successful with making some improvements at the Grandview area that make it more attractive. Having said that, it is, you know, the, the trick of the transition is then to make 49th Street and the folks who live across from that, make that an appealing, pedestrian-friendly, scale, relevant, relevant kind of place. And, you know, we've had a lot of questions about the height of those structures, or the apparent height of those structures, given some of the terrain change on 49th, and I'm distressed by that. And I, and I wonder too about the flat roof instead of the pitched roof. I can't say that I'm categorically opposed to it, but our comp plan does talk about pitched roofs as opposed to flat roofs in a residential area. As a transition, I guess I can, I can get comfortable with that, but it sounds like part of the reason that the flat roof is being used is because we're worried about the height, and it's a way to try to manage the height a little bit. So, um, hopefully, those ruminations have given some of you a chance to think of what you want to weigh in on as well. Commissioner Forrest.
Regarding the walkway that's going to have public access, who's responsible for maintaining it? I would presume the property owner. And who's liable if anybody injures themselves on it?
Mr. Matzenbacher?
Property owner is responsible, and the condominium association, the townhome association would be responsible.
Okay. Commissioner Carr.
Well, I, I just wanted to say, I think this is a reasonable use. The transition seems to make sense. Personally, I like the architecture. I think it's somewhat contemporary, but yet I think with the stone treatment, et cetera, it'll fit in nicely, um, with Edina, and the character of Edina. I do think it's a little bit dense, uh, and I, as I hinted at before, I think that, uh, I think that one end unit, which has got the 15-foot setback from the one house on the east, is too close. And that, that doesn't really seem to fit into, it's not a good transition in my mind, and I, you know, I would be in favor of it without that one end unit.
There's no guest parking.
Chair. Commissioner Carpenter.
Just a follow-up on something that Commissioner Schroeder was talking about before. Be curious, from my perspective at least, to hear how the proponent might respond to this idea of pulling it back. And, uh, I mean, you can probably explain it better than I can, reiterate it better than I can, but one, one thing that hasn't been addressed here is, is their response to that in terms of whether it's something they feel they can do, or how they might want to try to accomplish that.
Mr. Matzenbacher, you want to address that?
Absolutely. Um, I, I was just consulting with the owner, and, uh, part of the concern that we had before was just that we were buddying up against the property line. If the commission is amenable to, uh, in the PUD allowing us to get, you know, as close to that as possible, we can certainly look at shifting the development closer to Vernon. I don't think that we'd have any concerns with that.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Mr. Chair, if I can just follow up. If, if you were to slide the Vernon units six feet to the south and narrow the interior drive by six feet, you would gain 12 feet you could add on. Now, instead of being 25 feet and needing a variance, you'd be at 37 feet. We wouldn't be talking about a variance along 49th. If you were to narrow the interior driveway that runs north and south from 24 to 18 feet, we could add that six feet on to the other end. Now, instead of having a 15-foot setback, we'd have a 21-foot setback. Um, I, I look at how you just might squeeze this whole thing together and fit it better on the site. There may still be issues about the, the density, but I'm just saying, I think you can try and make this more compact, and I'm not at all concerned about the frontage along Vernon and the impacts that Vernon has on those units that are either going to be 15 or 21 or 12 feet, or whatever they are from Vernon. They're already out there on Vernon, so that's, that's the place where I'd start. Maybe the, maybe the right setback on Vernon is 10 feet. It's, it's a wide street. We're changing the, hopefully changing the character of Vernon as we move through the Grandview process, um, trying to make it even more walkable, which having units closer to the street would actually be a benefit for what we're trying to do across the street.
Is there consensus on that notion? May I hear anybody on the commission objecting to the notion then? Commissioner Scherer.
I like the general concept as articulated, but, um, I drive that little stretch of road a lot coming out of downtown. That's my way back home. And the one thing I thought about the entire development, even as it was presented, is I wouldn't find it very desirable to own one of the front-facing Vernon-
Right now?
Properties, right, as they exist now. And if we bring them an additional number of feet closer, that, it just would be even less appealing to me personally. I know that's not my problem, I don't have to sell the units. But, uh, I, I don't find that, that very attractive, given what goes on in that area and given the density of traffic morning, noon, and night. That is a busy little stretch coming off of Highway 100.
Commissioner Forrest.
Uh, I'm, the parking really bothers me. These are to be individually-owned units, and presumably, these people will have guests over. They will have baby showers and, and, um, other events that there will sporadically be a lot of people who will want to park on the street. Maybe even some of the unit or owners will park on the street for half a day just because it's easier to run in the front door, I don't know. I, I don't think that's been looked at enough. It's a really narrow street. You go through Country Club now, but parking on one side of the street, even with it only on one side of the street, you have to wait for the other car to go, pass before you can, um, go past the parked cars, even, especially in winter. So, I don't think the parking's been looked at enough. And I think the presumption that this, what, this property would not be redeveloped at all, uh, if we don't do a- do a planned unit development on it, I think that's a pretty strong presumption. I think naturally the property owner wants to maximize the return on his investment, but I think that it's still too big for the site and the height is just too big. So that's my, where I'm at.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Part of my reaction to this is that we're gonna, there is going to be development there at some point. And the street locations and configurations are already there unless it's going to be dramatically changed, which I suspect would not be the case. So I'm not quite sure what we'd be expecting somewhere down the road for redevelopment versus what we're talking about doing now for redevelopment that would be fundamentally different. Almost, I almost feel a little bit to some extent that what we're talking about is really kind of condemning the area from the perspective of not really being able to redevelop at all. And I don't, I don't think that's the right answer.
You know, I'd be more comfortable if that were redeveloped even to R2 or R1 and let somebody throw a whole bunch of money into a great big house on that property or several houses on that property. With only one access in to that neighborhood and it's on a very busy curve at the bottom of a steep hill, I think adding this much density is somewhat treacherous. And also the, when you have the parking, again, street parking, if it's increased more than it is now, that affects trash hauling, it affects school bus safety, it affects a lot of other things. And I think that if I were living in one of the houses in R1 and knew that I was going to have a four-story building shadowing over me from across the street, especially, you know, on good old Google Maps, you see somebody has great flower beds all around in front of their house, I wouldn't be very happy about that. I wouldn't feel comfortable. I wouldn't feel like I'm, I can look forward to any consistent lifestyle in my home. And the house next door, I, I'm kind of, the way that Nancy was saying about being, you know, living in a Vernon-side unit, I would feel very imposed upon to have something that close and that tall and that imposing right next door. And think about it if it were your property. I mean, try and put yourself in their, in their position. It's, you made some very good points. I agree with you in many ways about the redevelopment, and I think that this is much improved over some of the things we've seen in the past. But it's, I think we should not take amending the comp plan lightly. And I think they can, I think we should really consider the different ramifications to
So I'd entertain a motion if anyone has one. Commissioner Carpenter.
To kick it off, I would make a motion to approve the plan as set forth in the, or the proposal as set forth in the staff report, subject to the modification, I don't know if it's possible to do this or not, so I'd welcome input, but a modification to that that would somehow incorporate Commissioner Schroeder's comments, the ability for them to modify that. This may be really inviting them to come back and resubmit possibly. I'm framing this on the run here, so I'm no.
You're doing well.
I'd be interested in others' input to build this, but I just don't want to leave this thing sitting here without some sort of action. I think we've got some momentum on this in a way that seems very favorable. And so I'm, I'll make the motion to approve, subject to the comments of the commission right now with respect to, I'll say just to reflect Commissioner Schroeder's comments.
Is there a second?
I think I should second that.
Yeah, I think you should. You'll do a better job than I just did.
So that's a second?
That'll be second.
All right. So discussion, further discussion perhaps, fleshing out. Commissioner Schroeder, you care to flesh out your previous comments?
I think to clarify.
As a condition, perhaps.
As with the conditions. I would suggest that the interior driveways be narrowed by at least six feet and that the front yard setback at Vernon be increased by that six feet plus at least an additional six feet gained by shifting the units, the entire development, six feet southerly towards Vernon, resulting in a 37-foot setback at Vernon, a 10-foot setback at, I'm sorry, a 37-foot setback at 49th, a 10-foot setback at Vernon, and a 21-foot setback on the
Further discussion. Commissioner Grable, you've been very quiet. I remain concerned about the height on 49th. And the notion of putting rooftop usable space on top of what is already height that I'm concerned about, I think I would want to at least see a condition that would, that would preclude the use of the rooftop.
Are you proposing amendment?
I am.
I'd accept that.
Any other proposed amendments? Any other discussion? Commissioner Shear.
It's too tall and it's too dense for me, so I will be voting no.
Commissioner Potts.
I think to try and clarify what we're looking for along 49th Street, we've talked it through, but to get an accurate elevation that shows the street grade changing, the finished floor elevations, and any parapets or anything above that roof, all in context is something we're missing here, I think, to really be able to assess this well. But in general, I agree, the height on 49th is overbearing at this point.
Jackie, I think we'll have to do a roll call on this one as well.
Commissioner Shear?
Nay.
Commissioner Schroeder?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Aye.
Commissioner Carr?
Nay.
Commissioner Forrest?
Nay.
Commissioner Grable?
Aye.
Commissioner Sutton?
And I can't count that high. Is that five to three?
Five to three.
All right. So the motion passes five to three, recommendation to the city council. Thank you to the applicants. Thank you to the audience members who took the time to provide comments. Next is, next on the agenda is correspondence and petitions. Council connection and the attendance sheet are here as well for your information. Yeah, we've got, we're working on the attendance sheet. Apparently some people have attended more than 100% of the time. It's a little math trick, but we're gonna, we're gonna straighten that out, so. It's partly to do with starting at the time of the year and the like. And Commissioner Carr, you've only attended 0% of the time because this is your first meeting, so.
If there's some excess.
Would you like it?
I might want to borrow one.
You can, negotiations can proceed. So the next item on the agenda is Chair and Commission Member Comments. And I did want to, under this section, I had forwarded to all of you through Carrie, a follow-up on our meeting, our work session with the city council last week where Commissioners Platterter and Potts and Forrest presented much of their work on the residential redevelopment work that we've been doing. And we had a very good discussion with the council. There were some folks who were in attendance. It wasn't televised, but I think we got some feedback from them on some direction on how to proceed. And what I would like to kind of suggest to you is, is a schedule for proceeding from Before I do that, I guess, I guess the way I think about this is we've, what became clear in the work session is we have two different pieces to this. One is kind of the construction management planning, and then the second is the regulatory zoning ordinance kinds of amendments that we would need to make. And we discussed both of those issues with the council a week ago Tuesday. And there is considerable work underway on the construction management planning, and I understand that some enforcement actions on a staff level as well. There was also some discussion in Carrie. I wonder if you can just briefly update us on City Manager Neal's proposal for a potential demolition ordinance that might assist in that prospect.
Certainly. On the agenda for next Tuesday, and actually Scott introduced it at the end of the council meeting last week, and that is the ordinance that I passed out this evening that's before you that's labeled draft on the top. And that would be an ordinance that would require quite a significant change in our demolition permits. There would be a much more substantial fee associated with it. There would be a bond or a letter of credit that's posted also that the city could draw from if there are any violations to the construction management plan. You know, if the city has to go in and remedy some of those things, we would have money to collect in that regard. The council is intending on having a work session before their meeting next Tuesday at 4:30 to discuss this ordinance a little more, but it is possible that the council could pass this ordinance next Tuesday.
One of the things, when I talk to City Manager Neal about this, that he suggested, and I think it makes some sense, is it really is announcing to folks who are going to do a complete tear-down rebuild, that there's substantial oversight, that there's, there's rules you're going to have to follow as you're going through that building process. And I think that's, that's not a bad idea. So I wanted to provide that to you in terms of background. I don't, you know, while this may come back to us at some point, perhaps the planning, or perhaps the city council will want our input on it. It really kind of falls in that bucket of construction management regulation that I know staff has already got way under, well underway and Commissioners Platterter and Potts and Forrest really identified this early on, and there's actually a plan in place. So what I'd like to focus our attention on is what do we do moving forward in terms of a, in terms of zoning code changes? And I put together a tentative schedule that I'd like to suggest to the planning commission and get your feedback on. It's, it basically calls for us to break this kind of into three parts. We first create the list of topics that we really need to address. Then we have some discussion about the direction we'd like to go on each topic, send staff off to craft ordinance language on those, bring that back to us, and have us review that language. And once we're comfortable with the language, then we schedule a public hearing and hear from interested members of the public and look at the language, make whatever changes, and then make a recommendation to the city council. I recognize the dates that I have here might slip a little bit depending on how quickly we can turn it around, but my hope would be to get a recommendation to the city council by sometime before the end of June. And I'm just interested in any comments or thoughts from my fellow commissioners on whether you think this is a realistic way to proceed. Commissioner Forrest.
Based on what you said, and then the timetable that we've been presented with, it says approved list of potential zoning code amendments. Do you mean approve the list of the topics that we want to address?
Yes.
As a commission? Okay, that's what I thought.
And it may be that those lend themselves to existing ordinances, or it may be that we need a new ordinance that doesn't exist or... And I know I did have a chance to talk to Commissioner Platterter and his putative role as chair of your group, and he certainly agreed to try to come up with a list from the report that you three have put together. And obviously it'd be, I'd be interested in suggestions from any members of the commission, but particularly those three who worked so diligently on this. And I guess what I would suggest is that each of us forward suggestions to Carrie of items that belong on that list, and Carrie and staff will put that together as well and bring us something back at our March 27 meeting to look at. We can see if there's additional items we need to add to it. And then I'm suggesting that at the April 10 meeting, we have a work session to talk about directions to go on each of those. Now, I'm mindful of the, what I want to try and do with that work session is two things. One, have a good informal discussion. We certainly don't have a shortage of ability to have a good debate on this, in this group. But sometimes the dais is not, this format is not the best for an informal give and take. So we could do a work session in this room that obviously would be open to the public, would be more of a roundtable. Or we can do a work session and just kind of agree to be more informal right where we're sitting now and have it televised. I'm curious as to input one way or the other from folks on that. Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm very much in favor of the very informal approach for trying to work this stuff out.
Commissioner Carr.
Are you suggesting that at one instance it would be televised, that's the more formal session versus an informal one but still open to the public?
Well, so the logistical issue.
It's not televised, yeah.
Right, so all of them would be open to the public. The logistical issue we have is if we set up kind of a roundtable out here, we don't, we don't have the cameras set up to do that. So the only way the cameras work is with all of us sitting up here. It does make a freewheeling conversation a little bit harder, but, so I guess the question is whether to do an informal session that obviously would be open to the public, we'd set up chairs, we have a room that's certainly adequate to handle a lot of people. Yeah, and we did do that for our ordinance amendment process. That's the way we met kind of every other meeting was in that informal setting. It does make it a little easier for us to kind of chart direction for staff before they go back to make these changes. And then obviously we come back in a televised meeting to do the next stage. Commissioner Potts.
Yeah, I like the idea as well of a less formal setting. I think that's a good way to go. And I also like your proposed schedule to keep our momentum going here and keep that strong and push through this list that we generate between now and the next meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest.
Since this isn't a series of meetings like our other discussions were regarding zoning ordinance changes, I would prefer, if it's available, to meet in the community room with a sign on the door here saying, telling people where they are if they assume we're going to be in this room, just because there's a whiteboard and it's a little bit more proximity-wise, the tables are already set up, in a way that's easier to discuss things. And then I would ask that if, well, Carrie's compiling a list of items that he receives from other commissioners, could you forward them in real time to us on the committee so that if we already have some information that is supporting of that topic, we can pull it out and have it available, you know, ahead of time or look things up or check our notes?
Yeah. What I would envision is we certainly would have a list available in advance of the meeting.
Well, I'm just saying, if he's getting stuff from individual commissioners, it would be nice to just have him forward it on immediately to us, just because it will, rather than us getting, you know, a list on Friday before the meeting, it would just make it a lot easier, especially because I'm going to be traveling.
Let me say that we'll, I'll work with Carrie to accomplish as much of that as we're permitted Okay. Other, any other comments? I think we've got a direction with this. I do think it's important, as Commissioner Potts said, to move this ahead and, and get to a finish line. And I think if we can get done by the end of June, that's about a seven-month process. that I think is really quite remarkable, given the task at hand. So with that, are there other commission member comments? Anything anyone would like to share? Commissioner Grable.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and this comment is in fairness to Lunsen and Byerlys. Twice during the discussion on that proposal, the statement was made that Byerlys has said that the goals of the project were very simply to sell groceries and rent apartments. One might have said that the proposal we just had, the goal of that project quite simply was to sell condominiums, and I think there's nothing wrong with that. But in fairness to Lunsen and Byerlys, I think Mr. Paul's letter...
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Holmes' letter ought to be quoted in full. And he said, "The goals of this project are very simply to sell groceries and rent apartments and to develop the site in a way that best supports those endeavors within the context of the comp plan, zoning regulations, and the PUD process." And it's unfair to characterize them as saying that they're not concerned with those other things and just to say that they want to sell groceries and rent apartments. And I think it's a disservice to the developer to say it that way.
Other commission comments? Commissioner Carr.
I was reviewing your work plan and noticed that one of the...you have an initiative on lighting regulations. I don't know if you saw the article in the Minneapolis Star Tribune about how Paris has dimmed their lights and Tucson, Arizona has dimmed their lights and how a lot of people are now concerned about light pollution. So I just wanted to say that's a topic of interest to me and certainly can...would be willing to work on that initiative if you're at the point in time that's appropriate. And also maybe, Carrie, maybe you could forward that article...
That's a great idea.
...to the commissioners. Because again, I think light pollution isn't...when I first moved from...to Edina, well, I used to visit my sister in Edina. I used to live on Hudson, Wisconsin, south of Hudson, before the dog track and all that other stuff. And when I came to Edina, it was like I could barely sleep because it was so light. I said, "It never gets dark here." But these are what cities are doing now in the United States. They're looking at that. There's energy issues, but there's also the light pollution issue. And some cities are turning their lights off, maybe between 1:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the morning or 6:00 in the morning. And they're finding that it has no impact on safety at all, that in fact, what it does is really contrib...you know, reduces light pollution. When it's dark, people don't go out, so there's not the safety issues associated with that. In any event, the article is quite interesting.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. And I am remiss in my duties as chair in neglecting earlier in the meeting to welcome you. And we're happy to have you on the commission. We're looking forward to you being part of the happy family that we have. And really enjoyed your work this evening and look forward to more of it in the future. Other comments? Staff comments?
Yeah, just a reminder, our next meeting is Thursday, the 28th, due to a religious holiday that was shifted. It's on your calendars, but just a reminder that it's not the typical Wednesday that we...
So it's not Wednesday, the 27th. So the tentative schedule I had should say Thursday, the 28th, not Wednesday, the 27th. Thank you for that reminder. Other comments? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. There is a tradition on the commission of having the newest member make the motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a non-debatable motion.
No discussion.
No discussion. It was earlier than...